The Tuesday, November 23rd, Board of Selectmen's meeting. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Scott, you want to lead us in the pledge?
[laughing]
Oh, that's, sorry.
One of them.
I always do that to them, sorry.
[laughing]
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the business of liberty and justice for all.
You were just talking about Scott right before.
All right, anyone here for citizens input?
I think all three of you gentlemen are here for a later item, so anything come in? For citizens input? Okay. So our first agenda item is the public hearing for the Board of Assessors Tax Rate Certification. Since that is posted for 7:15, we do have to wait until 7:15, so we're just going to jump ahead. We have a lot of action items tonight, so Seth, are you ready to kind of start in on those action items, starting with the Trader Joe's one? And I think by the time we take those, hopefully, we'll be right at 7:15.
Motion to approve the change of officer for LLH LLC Doing Business as Trader Joe's from Edward Seeker to Tracy Anderson Ingram as the LLC manager.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Steph, are you abstaining from that one? Okay, all right.
Motion to approve the MIAA High School Football Championships at Gillette Stadium for December 1st, 2nd, and 6th, with the game scheduled on December 6th to be played on December 3rd or 4th, depending on the outcome of the New England Revolution game on November 30th.
Second.
Any further discussion? Everyone follow that okay?
Yep.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
One second, make sure my silent mode is on there. Motion to accept a $300 anonymous donation to the Council on Aging and Human Services Department.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Motion to approve a $500 donation from Foxborough VFW Post 2626 to Veteran Services.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Motion to accept a $500 donation from Foxborough American Legion Post 93.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Motion to appoint Kevin Powers to Board of Recreation for a term to end May 31st, 2024.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Motion to appoint Judy Garcia to the Foxborough Cultural Council for a term to end May 31st, 2024.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Motion to approve the October 26th, 2021 Board of Selectmen Meeting Minutes.
Second.
All those in favor? Now, the next three, I just want to make sure everyone's clear, there's no changes to any of these bargaining agreements. It's literally taking the MOA at the end and making it one document, so they're just one correlated document now, no changes within.
So what is the term for these?
For fiscal year '22.
One year.
It'll be end on June 30th of 2022.
So are we approving, so we have three items, and this first one has A and B, we do those separately?
Yes, please.
Separate, yes, please.
Motion to approve the Integrated Steelworkers Unit A Contract.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Motion to approve the Integrated Steelworkers Unit B Contract.
Second.
Any further discussion? Yes.
No, no discussion.
We got a lot of action. All those in favor?
Motion to approve the Integrated AFSCME Local 1702 DPW Union Contract.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Motion to approve the Fire Union Local 2522 Contract.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, we just flew through those in five minutes, so we still get another 10 minutes just before we open up our public hearing.
Madam Chairman, would you like to do the additional ones in new business?
Oh, okay, yep, sorry, you told me that and I forgot. So a couple donations came in after the agenda came out, so we're just going to go, it's not printed on the agenda, but they're there for you in Board Docs under New Business.
Motion to accept a $200 donation to Veteran Services from the Dystopian Reflections Event.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Motion to accept $165 donation to Veteran Services from CrossFit Tork.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, so I think I'll go to you, Mike, if you don't mind doing our recruitment update, because I think that may fit within the five or so minutes that we have.
Sure. So first, a couple of recruitments that we have completed, and I apologize if I mentioned any of these already, but we did hire our senior library assistant, that's Karen Dugan, internal promotion, we're very happy to promote her to her new position, which opens up, that was following Betsy Buckland's retirement, and now we're recruiting to fill Karen's position. Two other recent hires in the library were Library Pages, and we're very happy to have hired, and I hope I pronounce her first name correctly, Grant Daly of Foxborough High School, and Gillian Camo of King Philip High School, very delightful, astute young women who are starting right away. In Council on Aging and Human Services, following Elaine Repoff's retiring, we have hired Kristin Pellerin, she's already started and doing a bang-up job over at the Senior Center. In Veteran Services, we just recently hired, and she's already started, Lauren Burl, who comes from us, from the town of Middleborough, where she was doing the same job as the administrative assistant in that department. So what we have, that we're currently recruiting for, is we're, have advertised for a couple of paramedics, as well as, let's see, where's my list? Van driver substitute, as well as a part-time van driver, building commissioner, a department administrator for the water department, and that would be for, I think I mentioned this last time, Eileen, Eileen is retiring after more than 20 years of service, and also, I know I mentioned last time that Manny gave us his notice that he's accepted another position, so we are actively recruiting for a new library director, and I've been in active communications with the library Board of Trustees Chair, and working collaboratively to, you know, to get that along, and hoping to have that filled in January, before Manny retires, but we understand that may not be possible, because sometimes it's all difficult through the holidays, so we're going to be prepared, you know, for an interim, if that's the case. So that's what I have for now.
And Manny's here till January, is that?
He is.
Okay.
He's here till, I believe it's the 17th is his last day.
All right, we still have about six minutes.
Quick question.
Yeah, sorry. Mike, you mentioned two paramedics, is that paramedics that will be sent to firefighter school, or are you looking for firefighter paramedics?
I'm sorry, those are firefighter paramedics. Yeah, yeah. And we're actually anticipating some retirements over there, as well as some openings, so we're pretty active. I didn't mention police officers, we're still, as in all year, we're still looking for police officers.
And we're still under civil service, even though we just voted that, until that's accepted, right?
Right, we still have to go through the legislation.
Legislation, yeah, okay.
Correct.
And when do we anticipate that would happen, as a guest?
We're going to try and get it, we're just waiting for town meeting to be certified, and then I've talked to Bob about that today, as a matter of fact, and I said, when do you think we can get that material? He's hoping to have it to me by next week, it's a show week this week, so he's going to get it to me hopefully by next week, and then we'll get it filed. I've already alerted both Jay Barrows and sent an opinion about it, so they're both anticipating seeing it, and they'll help us get it through as soon as we can.
Okay, all right, great. All right, so we still have about five minutes, so I'm going to do selectmen's update. I have a couple things, but I think, I think we'll be able to get them all in. I don't know if any of you guys had seen, I saw Born had adopted a no solicitation list, so I know, like, when someone comes to my door, especially with COVID, I didn't like it anyways before, but even now, you know, just with people being aware and everything, it hit me as something that would be nice to have in Foxborough, so almost like you can opt into a do-not-call list, the way I read it in Born, is you can opt in, you know, to a do-not-solicit door-to-door, so when someone does apply to the police station, they would then in turn get this list, which you'd have to put yourself on it once a year, but it would be given to solicitors to not come to your door. So I brought it to Bill, who brought it, to Pat Costello, who looked at it, and he sent over a couple samples that he thought, he liked Sudbury, and I think he liked Rutland, if I remember, the two samples that are here, but Bill, does that, I believe it has to go to town meeting, so it's a bylaw change, not a policy change.
Yeah, it would be a bylaw change.
It would maybe be a placeholder, like some of the other things that we've talked about for spring town meeting, that I think would be like a quick no-brainer if people are, you know, are supportive of it, but just something that I had asked to tee up with the group and just keep in mind for the spring, and, you know, I know that there's six bylaws to look at in Board Docs, but if any of them, you know, hit you, just let me know as ones that you particularly like. Any thoughts or concerns about that, yeah?
Who have you, who's solicited at your residence? Just curious, like, I know, I don't know, I get, like, people, electric plan.
Yeah, I get Verizon, or one of them came, Verizon came, and then I also got someone with some kind of energy, I don't know if it was, like, turned them away, but if it was windows or something, that has come to my house, so I've received about two in the last six months.
So I know Pedlers or Hockers?
Yeah.
That's what was written in there.
Yeah.
Documentation.
That's the legal term.
They have to actually go to the police and get a permit, so they shouldn't just be going out and going door-to-door, they should be going to get a permit, and then they'd get this list, but, you know, nowadays, so many people come up to a door and, you know, they check the knob if someone's home, and I think as much as we can keep people off their property if they want that, I mean, certainly there's the right to go door-to-door, and they have the right to do that, but I think people have the right to opt out. So just a thought, to maybe consider putting a placeholder on, just to bring forward, feel out how other groups feel about it.
Would there be some type of, so say, a certain group has a couple of complaints that people are on this list, and they come, would our police department take that into consideration when they come and ask again?
I don't know that we're there yet, but I would hope so.
Yeah.
And, you know, I think it would be, like, I've had people come up, and I know that, like, I can see that they don't have something around their neck, and it would know if you're on the list, you know, this person shouldn't be going around, and, you know, just kind of alerting, alerting the right people to that. So we haven't figured out the logistics of how it would work, we've looked at how some other towns are doing it, so I think we have an idea, like Born, you go onto their site and it almost looks like it goes to a Google Doc or something that they have access to, so we'd have to figure some of that out, but just early, early thoughts on it. And then the next item is the special town meeting debrief, so we just talked about that, so we've committed to doing a debrief after every town meeting. I think special town meeting is a little bit different than annual town meeting, it is scheduled for next Tuesday, so it's going to be me, Bill, Bob, Frank, and then the Chair of AdCom. If you have any feedback, I think this one went pretty smooth, there's not really much that comes to mind for me, so I think it'll be quick, but if you have anything, certainly send it along to me and/or me and Bill, and we can take that to the meeting next week. And then, not on the agenda, but I had asked Paige, just because so much has been going on uptown, I asked her for a little update on Wall Street and the fire station, so many of you have probably seen that there's work going on on Wall Street for that project there, so it's moving along, the water sewer line is complete, and the site work is in full gears, they're like doing concrete footings and underground utility work, so that's well underway. They're hoping to be done within 12 to 13 months, so it's a pretty tight timeline, and then you've probably also seen, the demo is done on the fire station, they're starting some of the masonry block, moving utilities, they're going to start framing the fire station in December, so we'll see some real action there. Plumbers and electricians will start to work, and then they're going to move on to the funeral home after that, or sometime soon, and the asbestos has been abated from both of the buildings, so that was a big step, too. So they're working with Shovel Town to finalize their build-out plans, too.
Is that on target there, on the common, the old fire station, or is that delayed?
I think they're a little behind.
Yeah, I don't have, I didn't ask where they are on their original timeline, I know the whole project was delayed a little bit, but things seem to be progressing now pretty well, based on this update here.
So the goal is, their goal was to try and be in the pub area, or the brew pub area, sometime around April, May of next year.
Late spring.
And then they said that the apartment piece, the 19 units, would probably not occur to another year after that, so it is going to be done in phases.
So the focus seems to be kind of on the brew pub and fire station piece first, and we'll move on. And then you may have heard about, you know, the RFPs that were out for Walnut Street, so two viable, our two viable proposals came back in, and they're being reviewed by that committee over the next couple months, and they'll have interviews in early January. And then other uptown happenings, you'll probably see the tree lighting is the 27th, the orpheum is doing something kind of cool, where they're lighting up the building with some kind of show at 6:00 PM, so if you don't follow them on Facebook, that's going to start on November 27th, and it goes till sometime in December, I just can't remember the date right now, so follow those pages for updates. Foxborough Nutrition had the grand opening, that was attended pretty well, Jay Barrows came, and the gentleman Jeff who opened that said it really reminded him of his hometown Smithfield, and, you know, it was nice to have the town reach out to do the ribbon cutting, so that went well. And Small Business Saturday is the Saturday coming up, the 27th, so we actually did ask to have that billboard go on Route 1 again, Christina helped us. Christina helped us kind of rework that to get the shop local promo off of it, but we're hoping if, you know, Christina did the graphics and we can get it up, it was kind of nice last year when you drive down Route 1, to think about shopping and dining local, so.
So two very good additions to the downtown, the GA Baba Shop and the Foxborough Nutrition, two great additions, I mean, and they're two nice business people, they're really, they really care about the community, so it's great to see them here, and they're producing really good products, so, and good results, so really pleased to see them.
And the bakery's still trying to get open for December, so I keep asking that, that's still the plan, so that corner of Central Street will be hopping. So anything else under selectmen's update before we move on?
The lights on the common are coming along.
Yeah.
At least on my end, they're up and running, it looks very cool.
Yeah.
It's going to be really nice.
And they hope to be done by the 27th.
They're hoping to be done by the 27th, that was the plan.
All on target?
So far, it's going to be tight, but they're going to do what they can, get it done.
That'll be, that'll be very exciting.
Obviously, Bill, maybe the sidewalk's been there for a while, but I just noticed it on the school street side, where they have the sidewalk along, on the outside of the metal fence.
Yeah, that's an ad, so that's the pedestrian walkway, yeah.
And I knew I was coming, I just didn't notice it until today.
Yeah, they got it finished, they just finished it, yeah.
There's a lot going on uptown.
Yeah, it's good.
Yeah.
It's all good.
All right, so with that, now we're ready for our public hearing, if you guys are ready. I will have Seth, since it is a public hearing, just open up the hearing, so we'll take a motion for that, then he'll read the public hearing, and then we'll hear from you, and then we'll close it and discuss and vote.
This is the meeting notice, it's only the meeting notice opens the public hearing.
All right, so the next item is the Board of Assessors Tax Rate Certification Hearing.
So a motion to open the public hearing.
Is there anything more he has to read?
Well, yeah, he has the hearing notice.
They did it differently this year, so I'm not sure.
Read the whole thing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, just the top part, that'd be fine.
The Board of Assessors will be having the following scheduled meeting to be held at the Town Hall, 40 South Street, Foxborough, Mass, in the Andrew Gala Meeting Room, Tuesday, November 23rd, 2021, 7:15, so there's an agenda. The Foxborough Board of Assessors will be holding a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen for the town's certification presentation, so.
So that opens it, yeah.
Second.
All those in favor? All right, if you gentlemen can introduce yourselves, and then dive right into your presentation.
Comwell's Chief Assessor.
Rob O'Donnell, Assessor.
George Samia, Finance Director.
So I have about 20 slides to go through, and then, it sounds like a lot, but it's really not too bad, and then we can have questions or whatever. So let's get right into it. The purpose of the tax classification hearing is to set the minimum residential factor for the town, which will determine the shift of the tax burden between the residential and the commercial classes. This is also known as setting a split rate, and the Board of Selectmen will also have options as the open space discount, the residential exemption, and the small commercial exemption, and you will vote on the minimum residential factor as well. The open space discount is an up to a 25% shift to an assessed value, it's not recommended as this program has already addressed with the Chaplain program. It shifts up to 25% of the value to the residential class, increasing the tax rate on the residential class. Only one of 351 communities have that option. The residential exemption is up to a 20% shift of average assessed value, this shifts tax burden between different values, between the low-priced homes and the higher-priced homes. Application of this option is in major cities and Cape towns with seasonal properties, it's like your Boston, your Wisters, and a lot of the Cape communities do that option. And the small commercial exemption is the last option, that's up to a 10% of assessed value can be shifted. This requires an extensive analysis on the business operations, less than a million dollars in value and less than 10 employees. It will not help those leasing a business space as the exemption goes to the property owner. Also, the other commercial, industrial class would have a tax increase. 17 of 351 municipalities have this option. Foxborough has never implemented these additional options, and the Board of Assessors, at their meeting on 11/16/21, recommended to decline these options.
Do we have that, the option? So it mentioned that they're only a handful of the 351 have the option, but Foxborough could opt in?
You can do these options, Seth, these are.
We're going to vote on all these later, we do that.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we're talking about something we can actually do, but the recommendation is not to.
Yeah, correct, yes.
Yeah, thanks.
So as far as, next slide, classification of property, where is Foxborough? Foxborough is, like most towns, primarily residential community, but we do have a strong commercial base, so it's 78% residential, 22% commercial, industrial, industrial and personal property. So that 22% is significant in the area for, on the commercial side. The following slide is basically a breakdown of that by dollars, the assessed value by class, and if you look at that, those numbers on the bottom, I apologize, they're small, but everything is basically going up in value, since in the past five years, and the residents are going higher than anybody, the other classes, the residential class is going higher, on a higher percentage basis. The town as a whole is around $3.6 billion in total value. The following slide is about the tax levy itself. Tax levy is the amount of, the amount the community raises through the property tax. The tax levy is taking last year's levy and adding 2.5% per mass general law plus new growth. The proposed levy for this year is $55,962,448, a 3.8% increase from last year. This is pretty typical for most towns, they go up 3%, 4% a year on the tax levy. On the next slide, we are in an interim revaluation year, what that means is, we're between a five-year cycle on our revaluation with the state, they still check our values on interim, but not as rigorous than on a five-year analysis. So we review sales everywhere, make market adjustments. This year, if you look at the sales around, I'm not talking the last three months, but I'm talking about a year ago, they're up about, you know, on average, 5.7%. This year, they seem to be quite a bit higher. The sales are going very high this year, and will probably be reflected next year, because we have no choice, we have to represent fair cash value on properties.
Madam Chair, just an important point here, that, Tom, I think it's important to note to people that the assessed value is based on what year, and what date in what year?
Right.
For this one, what year, what, so I want you to tell people what.
For fiscal year '22 is based on January 1st, 2021.
Okay.
And that's, we're looking at right now.
Okay.
So next year, it'll be '22.
Correct.
So as part of that valuation process, we also have to do inspections, so it's not only what's happening in the market, it's what's happening to your property. So people enhancing their properties, doing things, or they're letting it go, we have to reflect those changes as well. It's those two items that go into the value of your property. So as far as the trends in the market and the workplace, COVID did have an impact on valuation and changes in the office environment, as we know, many people ended up working at home, and I think when they got home, they said, this is pretty nice, I think I'd rather stay home, and, you know, they give up pay to stay home, and a lot of employers are actually paying them to enhance their properties, in turn, that reflects on the valuation of their property, because, you know, they're improving their office, they're improving their homes, so that's reflected in the market. As far as the, on the retail side, e-commerce is still very strong, as you can see on your street, you have FedEx, UPS, and Amazon going down my street every day, so that's reflected in the retail side, but we still have strong retail hubs, like Patriot Place, like Legacy Place, like Rentham Outlets, it's just that that e-commerce is not going anywhere, that's going to be there for the, you know, foreseeable future, and probably grow, it's projected to grow, actually. The next slide is, I call it the upslide, because it's just, everything is increasing in value. We're over, the average value is now over $500,000 in the town of Foxborough, I'm not sure if that's ever been over that number, but it hasn't in the past five years, as you can see. And also, the bottom line there, you can see the sales, the average sale price is approaching $600,000 for the town of Foxborough. We see a lot of that, those prices coming into the office right now, and just, it's just what the market is bearing right now.
Is there a physical assessment of every property, or how, you're saying each, the residential goes up, say, 5% or 6% a year?
Yes.
Like, did you look at my house and decide it was, looks shabbier, and so it's 3%? Or what are you doing for, how does the process work?
Well, that's where, we do a market analysis on your neighborhood and all different neighborhoods in town, and then we make adjustments based on the sales, and that's, we have a consultant come in and helps with that, and on the commercial side as well, but then, like I was saying earlier, we also, we're going to be talking about, there's an inspection program that has to be done, it is done previously with Hannah, but we got to continue that until 2025, because we have expectations from the Department of Revenue to visit a property once every 10 years, so.
So if Doc and I live in the same neighborhood, our houses go up the same rate?
On the, on the market side, but there's always changes, like you might have a finished basement and they don't, so.
But if not, if neither of us change anything, it would just be like a rate increase, right?
Yes, it'd be a few percentage points.
Okay, I got it, thank you.
No, that varies depending on the style and your land and things like that.
Right, but if the style doesn't change, his house doesn't change, mine doesn't change, the neighborhood doesn't, you know, so, in essence.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, like, if you have a colonial and he has a ranch, the ranch may go up a little different than the colonial.
Oh, okay.
Something like that, even though you're next to each other.
People like ranches better, or colonials better.
Yeah, exactly, it all depends, and typically, ranches are pretty sought-after properties.
Good, good context, appreciate it.
Well, also, if a resident really thought, I mean, just say there was, you know, a new neighborhood, for instance, a new neighborhood went up and all the property around it was, except for one little house, that decided, so if a resident really thought there was something off with their evaluation, they would just come down and see you guys, right?
Yeah.
Like, you know, if it was an oddball house in a neighborhood or something.
Yep.
Yeah, they'd just come down, and then you would look at that individually, if you thought.
Yeah, every year in January is the abatement period, so if there's an issue with their property, if there's an error on the property record card, or the land's wrong, we'd take a look at that, and make a determination with the board, obviously, they would look at that as well.
Okay, thanks.
All right, so the next slide is new growth. So the last couple of years, it looks like new growth's been down a little bit, I think that's somewhat related to COVID as well, and speaking with the building department, some of the larger projects have had supply chain issues actually with steel and things chain issues, actually, with steel and things like that, so it's slowed down construction. So I think that's reflected in the, I expect those numbers to increase in the next couple of years, as things kind of come back. And the next slide is just comparison where Foxborough is on the, on the tax rate. And Foxborough's competitive, they're in the middle. You guys, basically, an average tax rate. Rentham being on the low end and Sharon being on the high end. It's the same when you look at the commercial tax rates. Foxborough, again, is in the middle with Mansfield on the high end and Rentham on the low end. As far as the residential construction goes, that top line is an indicator of how many new single-family homes have been constructed in the past year. Now, usually, I don't have anything else that would show there, but I wanted to see what condos, because you have such a large condo component in Foxborough. Where I came from, there was hardly any condos. So you can see there actually is a lot of condo activity on that bottom line. So when you combine the two, there's quite a bit of residential construction going on in Foxborough.
Oh, this page.
Yeah, this is different than what we have in here. That's, it took me a second, too.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's what I'm saying. I added condos after the fact, because I wanted you guys to see that.
Is that gross adds or net?
That's total adds for the year.
So what if they tore down a house and put up a new one? Is that zero or is that one?
Like, we have some single families that are torn down and then a duplex goes up.
Yeah, that would be counted in that number. That's considered a new. Yep.
Okay.
So these next couple of charts are actually taken from the previous presentation last year, because it's just historical data. And what I want you to focus on there is the 2021 average increase of $275,40 on the residential side. And if you look further down, it's basically between $200 and $300 increase on average. It's historically what Foxborough has done. Keep that in mind when we talk about the proposal for this year. And as far as the commercial side, that increase last year was $889 and $179 on the industrial side. There's a little more variation on those increases, because during the five-year certification, commercials usually get hit harder, because they have more analysis at that time. So as far as what's proposed for this year, as I, as I just discussed, we're looking at a $296 increase on the residential side on average, an $860 increase for the commercial, and a $96 increase on the industrial, if you go with the recommendation from the Board of Assessors, which is 1.2 to a 940 factor. This, this was, seemed to be the most fair and equitable situation for people, based on your historic record of average increases. And that's why it's recommended at this time. As far as the community shifts, this is just for your purposes or where these other communities are around us. Foxborough shifts at about the 1.2 rate. Franklin doesn't shift at all. Mansfield has a 1.34 shift. Norfolk doesn't shift. North Attleworth is about the same as Foxborough. Plainville, a little lower. Sharon doesn't shift, and Walpole's higher than Foxborough on the shift. That's just for comparison. The, this is kind of a messy slide, but this is the spreadsheet that I used to develop the shift that we just talked about. As you can see in the middle there, that's the proposed number. And this is, if you go one way or the other, like 1.21, 1.20, 1.23, if you go the other way, if you want to shift more, if you want to shift less. And you can see the differences there. It's $20 or more, you know, depending a point one way or the other. The, the point was to keep the residential increase under $300, because I don't think it's bent over that. So that was one of the major drivers. Plus, commercial is actually getting a cut compared to last year, so they're not really taken ahead either. So it seemed to be the inequitable position for the town.
Question on?
Yep.
I just was looking at 17 still. So the increase is about $300, while the rate is declining. So I think that implies that we're building bigger, more expensive houses when we're, I mean, I guess that's logical, right? But the houses we're building are high-value, 700, 800, $1,000 houses?
Absolutely, yeah.
Right. And so the rate could drop per unit, but.
Plus the ones that existed went up as well.
Yeah, the value, it's a function of the market right now, Seth. I mean, if you take a look at where the market is, it's a case of supply and demand. I mean, I think there was somebody who noted that, I saw on a report somewhere that was only, that we only had six new houses last year. But yeah, the demand for those houses was pretty high. And so what's going on is that those houses are actually being bought over and above what their asking price is.
Yeah, I think that's confusing, though, Bill. Like, the values can go up, but we only have so much money that we can bill for property taxes.
Right.
Because of the 2.5 increase. So values going up in and of themselves is not going to drive the rate significantly higher.
The rate will actually conversely comes down.
Which is what's happening here.
Yeah, that's what happens. The rate comes down when that happens.
Right.
So, and it was just, I just wanted to add that there was, I, there was some information that just came in, actually, two days ago, that I saw from the Board of Realtors, that said that Foxborough, over the past, let me see here, we're just, yeah. So in, so we, the values that were assessed right now are based upon January 1 valuations. The valuations in October of this year went from, from last year, at 2020, the value, the average valuation was $507,000. In October of 2021, the average valuation is coming in, in terms of houses sold, at $612,000. So that's a $100,000 increase in one year. And it's interesting to note, too, that even condominium prices in 2021 are averaging around $541,000, but year-to-date, they're around $475 on average. But right now, they're coming in higher than they were before. So what's happening is the market is continuing to climb based, and it's primarily driven by, by supply and demand. It is true that there were, some of the houses that we're seeing built now are still big, but that's because the land cost is so high, and as a result, they have to justify the cost of land to build a house. So that's what's happening.
During COVID, too, a lot of people wanted to get out of the city.
Right.
So they wanted to move this way. So you had a lot of people moving out of an 800-square-foot condo for $1 million to Foxborough, where they could get a nice $600,000 house with a backyard. So that was popular.
Exactly right.
And have any towns around us, like the slide that you have comparing, have any other towns set their rate? And are we kind of in line there, like?
I just looked at that before I came over, actually, to see if anybody had set their rates. I can tell you what I had. So Norfolk went from $1799 to $1820, but they don't, they have a single rate. Mansfield actually dropped to $1517. North Attleworth went to $1393. And Easton has a single rate there at $1539. That's on the residential side. On the commercial side, Mansfield went way down to $1888. I don't know why. And North Attleworth is $1706. That's the only ones that I could find so far.
Still kind of in line, though, where?
Yeah.
Some of them are down, down a little bit, which is what is being proposed here.
Yep.
Yeah, I think it's just hard for the, for the average resident to, I mean, if you're selling your home and you, you see this, then you say, "Oh, like, you know, we have, Summerfield, houses are going for $100,000." You know, one went for over $600, like $649, it's a two-bedroom home. And so if you're selling, then I think then you, you get it. For some reason, this, even when I was on AdCom, was always the hardest for me to follow, you know? And the average person at home just says, "Oh, my taxes are going up." And my house isn't different, everything's the same. But unfortunately, this is just the way it works.
Yeah, since it's made of the assessed value.
The market's driving the values up. People don't understand that.
So you're not going anywhere.
I hear that all the time when you do inspections and things like, "I haven't changed a thing." No, I know, but your house is now worth $50,000 more, because your neighbor sold for $50,000.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it is, it's hard to comprehend, though, when you're.
Yeah, if anybody at home's watching, I mean, I think it took me three times seeing a presentation about it to, like, you know, be like, boom, boom, all right. It's, you know, it's, it's something really you have, you have no control of, or as a homeowner or resident, as a taxpayer. It's just whatever the market's doing. And, you know, like Rob said, I mean, people are, you know, leaving the cities and coming out here. And, I mean, I'm guessing Leah is a realtor, too. I mean, I, I just can't even believe, like, what, how crazy it is right now.
Yeah, the thing's going for overask. I mean, it's, really, are you sure about this?
Paying cash, that's the thing about it. They're paying cash.
Yeah, cash isn't like it used to be, where you get your offer, goes to the top of the pile, everyone's paying cash.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, you know, just to summarize here, to make sure, because that's the biggest, it was hard for me the first couple of years seeing this, too, is we're effectively reducing the rate, but people may still see their tax bills go up a little bit because of that assessed value, so.
Yes.
But it's relative. So that's where, that's where it gets hairy, are the way we're explaining it now, if everyone's property went up 15% across the town, or 50%, say, everyone's property went up 50%. Their, their tax bill wouldn't necess, well, per dollar of assessed value, but their overall tax bill might not increase by more than a couple of points as well, right?
Right.
Because everyone's property is 50% more valuable, not this neighborhood, that neighborhood.
It's very likely that the rate will go down again next year, because as Bill said, the.
So we're not increasing the rate and property value.
So all else equal, your tax bill shouldn't go up by more than 2.5%.
Right, except that the house itself.
Yeah, that's.
The 2.5% is for the global, the entire town, not for individual property, though.
I know, understood. But I'm saying, all else equal, assessments don't change across the town at all, except everyone goes up 50%. We're allocating that pie, that pie can only go up 2.5%.
Yes.
So if everyone's valuation stays proportionally the same, your tax bill would not go up by more than 2.5%. Is that a fair statement?
Well, it depends on what you're doing to the house, too, because like you said.
Nothing. Everything else is the same.
He said, he said, "Everything else is the same." All relative speaking, I think the answer is yes.
Which I know is complete lunacy, it doesn't happen, but.
Yeah, I understand the point.
I've heard people say, "My tax bill went up. I didn't do anything. What the heck's going on? Why's my tax bill going up by 7%?"
Right.
And it's like, it has to do with the assessment.
Right, right. You're right.
Yeah.
Exactly right.
Thank you. I'm good.
We go through that, yeah, that same discussion every year for what the data is. Yep.
It's, the answer is yes, with lots of, lots of caveats.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Fantasyland, if that was.
That's right.
I was going to say, what Rob was talking about, young people moving to town and buying up houses. I've recently been in a couple of houses, and young couples, and they're buying regular houses for a lot of money, but they're getting out of Brookline and they're getting out of Squinsey and other towns like that. So it's definitely happening.
And the interest rates are so low, it's not a big difference if they pay $50,000 more. You know, if the interest rate was seven, then that would be a big difference. But they just look at their interest rate and they say, "Oh, I can afford $500,000." And if they don't get that house, the next week, they're putting an offer for $550,000. And they just look and say, "Oh, so give me another $30 or $40 a month."
Yeah, rents are so high that they're probably still saving, you know, with the buy versus the rent.
From where they were coming from, too.
Exactly.
The real mystery is how the banks are dealing with this, because how the banks, how are they valuing these properties, you know, and, and coming up with a way to provide, you know, clear, good mortgages on these, on these properties? Because a lot of people are putting a lot of cash down on them, but still, you know, they, it's different the way, nobody does.
It's tough with the appraisers, because the appraisers will come in before the sale.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The house won't appraise, because everything that's pending has gone up.
Right.
But it's six weeks behind, so it's a little difficult.
Yeah.
So people look for the people who are putting down at least 10 or 20% as opposed to 3 or 5%.
Yeah, big difference.
So, yeah, that's, this is basically just a table from the Department of Revenue that we use to develop our own table. They, they provide an options table, and this is just for reference. This is where the information comes from. So in summary, the Board of Selectmen must select the minimum residential factor to set the rate. If a minimum residential factor was one, that would be a single rate, and that rate would be 1544, but the changes would be so drastic, it's not, you know, realistic. But I just put it out there. So the Board of Assessors recommends a minimum residential factor of .9401, a 1.22 shift, and to decline the other additional options. This would be a tax rate of 1452 for residential and 1884 commercial. And the LA5 excess capacity for the year is $25,609, similar to what happens in previous years. So with that, open to any other questions?
I think that the motions are a little bit different in board docs than they are in the presentation, so I think we're going to use what's in board docs, right? Because we're missing one. It's the open space. It's the open space we're missing.
Yeah, you can vote that as well.
Yep. So we'll use the ones in board docs, if that's, if everyone's okay with that.
I would ask at the, at the end, because actually I gave to Christina, it's actually a copy of the LA5, and then I put everybody's names on it, so you can sign it. It's empty, assuming you're going with what the Board of Assessors has recommended.
Anyone here from the public have any? I don't think I see anyone from the public here. Any comments come in, Christina? To the box, no?
Just curious, do we ever get feedback from commercial, industrial with this process? I mean, you know, we're all, not all, you know, people, a lot of us own homes here, residential, pay residential rates, so if we see there's a shift that favors residential, we're, you know, we're like, "Hey, that sounds good to me." Right? But in terms of the burden of tax.
That's what, I mean, I think that's what this is for. The commercial people can come to the meeting or the abatement process. They use, basically, if they don't like their value, they don't file it.
Right. And that's like relative, though. That's like, that's like splitting the pie differently. This is what we're talking about here, is shifting the big, you know, that's the big pie, and we're cutting it into three or four pieces.
Yeah.
Do they, so is there any ever feedback? Are they just, commercial, residential, just accept it? And do they even notice, or?
So there has been some in the past. I can tell you that.
We've had the split for, this is going on 10 years now.
Right. So in the, in the, there were a couple instances where we did have some commercial anticipation, but the, the split process has been pretty consistent in Foxborough for the, for the past several years, to the point where nobody has, has taken that up as an interest. So as long as it's fair and considered, consistent across the process, I think they viewed that as being reasonable and fair.
Yeah.
Especially if you look at the towns around us. So Norfolk doesn't have a lot of commercial.
Yeah. Sharon doesn't have a lot of.
Yeah, so the towns that, most of the towns do have the split. So I think even in the area, never mind Foxborough in the area, it's pretty.
Okay. So no feedback one way or another, based, from, based on this? Okay.
Basically, what drives this is what we spend, right? We have a number we have to get to. Is that how, how we play with, play with these numbers to get to a certain number? Like, you know, someone might just say, you know, taxes in Mansfield are higher than taxes in Foxborough, or, you know, or, you know, or between different towns. So is that really what drives this?
There's a lot of things that drive it. I mean, it's the levy plus overrides, you know, debt exclusions, things like that, that, you know, that Foxborough doesn't have much of. But that, that goes into your.
But when I say, so all those things that you're talking about are what we need, that's what our nut is, what, what we need to have.[1731.63] So if, if the town spends more money, then there's no other choice but your taxes to go up. We have a number we have to get to, correct? But I, I know, I know there's all different pieces that will get us to that number, but that's really what drives.
Well, what he, what he just was saying, like, the override would be the key to it. You can't go over the two and a half percent.
Mm-hmm.
So you're, you're stuck at that particular level. And if you wanted to go over that, then the town would have to vote to say, I wanna go over a million, I wanna go over two, I wanna go over three, which in turn would affect the tax rate even higher. One of the things that I think that, um, Foxborough has done, that I'm, I'm still astounded as after being here for three years, was when you guys went out for lawn for that, you know, for the new school. And you, you didn't even, and I'm not looking at you personally, but I mean, the town, the town, um, chose not to do a debt exclusion override, which is, is stunning that you were able to, um, continue to, to, to fund from within without going for more taxes and so something like that would have had a, a, a major effect if you went over for like that twenty million dollars, it might have gone up another million or so.
And I think we tend to see, it's not like these numbers shift between towns, like Sharon's usually at the top, I feel like Renthams usually at the bottom, maybe in the middle. They move around a little bit, but it's not like, uh, different years, they're coming in different places, depending where they need to get.
Foxborough consistently stays somewhere right in the middle.
And I feel like Sharon's on the top and Renthams typically.
Right.
It's like that, those two posts are usually about the same. At least on the residential side.
And that's where you wanna be, if you can be in the middle, that's the fair place to be.
All right, we'll close the public hearing, cause there's no one here, so we'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
All right, I think we're ready for motions on the other ones. Any discussion before we head into the four that we have there?
Motion to continue with the split tax rate and adopt a residential factor of zero point nine four zero one.
Second.
All those in favor?
Motion to vote no on residential exemption.
Second.
All those in favor?
Motion to vote no on the small commercial exemption.
Second.
All those in favor?
Motion to vote no on the open space discount.
Second.
All those in favor?
Great.
But, great presentation.
Yeah, great presentation. Thanks for putting the surrounding towns, that's, that's always really helpful for, for us to see where we compare.
Try to do that, yeah, I think it's definitely helpful.
Yeah, it is, thank you. All right, so George, stay right where you are. Move that microphone closer. Seems like Mr. Beck was having trouble hearing you. I don't think anyone's ever had trouble hearing.
Yeah, I know, I mean, I, I usually can hear you without a microphone, yeah.
So I think we'll have, so I think you guys are all set. Yep, you guys.
Well, stay with, yeah, you stay with.
Okay, you're gonna stay here for, okay, all right, so I think that Marie and Paula are just gonna join, join you up here.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you, Rob.
Thanks, Rob.
Bye.
Well, I assume we're into the section for the, uh.
Yeah, so the next part is just, you know, we have a lot of budget and finance things on, on the agenda tonight, and we have a department head update once a month, so we figured, you know, we might as well kill three birds with one stone while you guys are here tonight.
Well, um, one of the things that I tend to do, uh, during these, uh, these meetings, and I hate it to be a redundancy to the people who are in the room, but I guess when you're sitting home, um, I, I go by what the newspapers do when you, you, you print an article, you might have print, this might be the fiftieth article on the same topic, but you gotta assume that the guy that might be reading it is the first time they're looking at it, so I usually stick to saying the same things over and over again as we go year by year. So e- essentially, one of the things I was gonna open up with, uh, today is, is that when, um, the, the folks in Foxborough look at the finance department, I think that they, they look at it as one lumped, um, uh, section, which by design it was, it was by all these, these departments were put in, but it actually consists of three in kind of four major departments. One of them is, oh, for example, the assessors, okay. Uh, the second would be the treasurer, and then I'm gonna put a slash on the collector, which in some towns is actually two separate, um, uh, departments. And then the third is, is your accounting. Each one of these departments is by statutory law, has its own, uh, purposes and own laws that they have to, um, uh, abide by. The, 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 the strange part about it is, is that many of the things, for example, what does your treasurer do? Well, the treasurer takes the money that's coming into the town and invests it. Uh, the collector is the one that actually collects it, okay? The assessors are the ones, just as you just spoke about only a, 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 a while back, um, in this meeting, are the people who are assessing how much that you owe to the town. And the accountant, who is actually the inverse of your, of your treasurer, and sometimes the, um, the, the check and the balance, the two of them are, actually takes the town meeting warrant, takes the money that, that, that the town has decided to vote in various, puts it into little boxes and sees that it's expended properly. So each one of these departments is really a separate entity, yet they're all interconnected. Um, we've had a lot of change in there over the last year, but I think what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna allow each department to talk about the individual pieces that they have, uh, beginning, I believe, with, uh, we, starting with Tom again. Um, unfortunately, he's on the hard seat tonight, uh, cause he's the new guy. And then we'll move on to, um, uh, the accountant, and then ultimately the treasurer.
All right, so.
You wanna move the microphone over to Tom?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the Beck is happy. So we just discussed a lot of what's been happening in the office for the last month and a half or so, getting ready for the tax rate. Um, I started in August and basically been going through the different procedures in the office, continuing them, and, um, we have a calendar every year of what we do, it's, you know, we have certain requirements with the state that we have to meet, so those are continuing with the staff. Um, we went through our annual valuation, uh, program with a consultant, and that was part of the, the tax rate itself too. Um, we also are collect, collecting mapping and lot changes, which is an important part of the job. Um, and in the spring of twenty twenty-two, we're hoping to get a, um, a new GIS system in place, so that'll help. We get a lot of requests from citizens for plot plans, but we don't have plot plans. We have, all we have is the assessors' maps, but if we have a, uh, an active GIS system more enhanced, we can offer them that. It's kind of like, we use that as a plot plan, because it is the assessors' map, it's kind of an enhanced assessors' map, so we're gonna hopefully get that in place in the spring. And then, as I said earlier, we, we work with the D O R to set our, uh, tax rate. We got that approved in Octo-, um, yeah, October twenty-first. So now we've just been waiting for tonight to set the rate. Um, we're preparing a lot of paperwork to be sent out that we do every year for the formal lists, uh, for personal property and the income and expense, uh, reports, so that we can do our valuation process, uh, correctly. And then obviously we'll be getting ready for the abatement period in January, um, and answering any questions from residents on valuation, things like that. And, uh, we, we have the staff working on some, some projects, uh, related to inspection and condominiums, so we can develop a three-year inspection program to our next certification in twenty twenty-five. Um, and we're, we're in line to meet all those requirements, so that's what's happening in the assessors' office.
There is one, some, there is something, there is something rather subtle that, um, that, that, that I'll say. Tom and the Board of Selectmen have just almost put a period to the end of the tax rate setting. And let's, let's say this, the tax rate setting or the recap sheet is in reality the culmination of our entire budget process in any one particular year. So what is coming to the end tonight, that the, the recap sheet has on it every expenditure we've made during the year, all the revenues we've taken in during the year, all the moves and internal moves that we've made, putting it all together, and the tax rate is being set off of that. And this is, in fact, the culmination of last year, or the twenty twenty-two budget season, is on there. I'll let Marie go next.
Tom, you can go if you want. You don't have to stick around.
Yeah, I'll stay. Interesting.
You know that there's one property, Zero Twilight Drive, to look out for when those bills come out.
Oh, yeah.
Did you hear about that one? Okay, it had to go to town meeting to fix it.
Oh, half a last year.
And then it went out again after, so you gotta, being new, you gotta know to watch for that one now.
I don't care, House.
No, not my house.
And actually, that person did come in and pay that off, and so it's all resolved now.
But then they got a tax bill after it, so that's why we gotta, we gotta watch that one.
I don't understand that one.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
It was one of those things where I'm not sure why, cause I think it was on the books as of the, the.
Now, I'm curious, I can look that up.
Write that one down.
Zero Twilight Drive, keep me on the top of it.
We can't, we can't get another call from her than another bill has gone out on that one.
So, uh, I wanted to start off, um, just with a brief slide showing where we stand with the, the revenue collections. So as you can see, uh, tax levy is almost fifty percent collected. Um, that's on just two of the four quarters that we bill yearly, uh, stated, for, just above, uh, forty-two percent. Um, local receipts, uh, sitting at seventeen percent right now. Um, one thing I did want to note is, uh, specifically, uh, hotel, motel and meals tax. Um, what we've collected in just alone, the first quarter alone is either fifty percent or just below fifty percent of what we collected in the entire previous fiscal year. So we're seeing an uptick in, you know, in those, uh, revenues, and we get that revenue quarterly, so we should be getting the second quarter at some point, I wanna say, late December, early January. So once we, once that quarter comes in, you know, that would be a good indication on, you know, of where we stand, um, going forward. Um, overall, uh, forty-three point six percent collected. When you compare today to one year ago, um, last year we were about forty-one percent collected. Um, I mean, not much of a, a change there, but we are going to be sending out the first commitment of motor vehicle bills, uh, sometime in late January is usually when we get that. So we'll see motor vehicle will just spike up, um, same thing, you know, the hotel, motel, the meals. We're expecting the, the, uh, guaranteed payment from the Patriots, uh, sometime early next year, so a lot of these revenues come in, you know, later on. So don't be alarmed when you see only seventeen percent.
So it, I mean, if you're just looking at this, it would, I'm not alarmed, cause you're not, but if I was looking at this and saying, hmm, seventeen percent on, so, we don't budget by month, do we?
No.
No.
Okay.
So bottom line, so say if, for example, I mean, we, we budget for each category in the local receipts, but when you look at, we have to look at it bottom line, so your motor vehicle could be down, maybe you won't collect a hundred percent, but it, it could, that could, that, um, shortage could be made up in some of the other categories.
And a lot of it does come in towards the latter part of, I mean, most of your motor vehicle.
Yeah, I mean, again, cause you guys aren't considered, cause that doesn't tell me much when you're comparing year-to-date versus a full year, cause there's all kinds of dynamics.
Right, there's seasonal dynamics that can.
Yeah, yeah, so.
You won't get that, like, the, the, that's the biggie, is the big check there for the, the, the stadium.
Pilot.
Yeah, the pilot, uh, and that won't come in until February, so that's.
There, there is some good news in that front, in the sense that, you know, they've had a good year with, with the revolution, which is, you know, that's normally those, and, and the chief remember this too, that you know, they would get somewhere around twenty, ten to fifteen thousand per, per game. Now, now they're seeing crowds as high as twenty-five, thirty, forty thousand people at games. So that's, that's gonna be a big tick up in terms of revenues in that area. We didn't see any concerts this year, but we will see some several next year. The question is when, if they will come in before the end of the fiscal year or, uh, after the start of the fiscal year, and of course, that would then fall into FY twenty-three revenues, but, but I do think that, you know, generally speaking, you know, and, and if the Patriots continue on in the direction that they are, you know, hold their breaths here, but, you know, they could, they could make a playoff game, and that's, that's also another uh, individual, uh, bump in the, in the revenue.
Reds made playoffs, that's.
Reds made the playoffs too, so, so, and they have a playoff game this weekend, so, so we're gonna see, again, a, a further tick up in those, in those revenues based on those alone.
Since Maria and I have been here, I, I don't think, what, what was it, came in, it was rugby the other day?
Lacrosse.
Lacrosse.
Lacrosse and monster jam.
And I think the motocross, motocross.
First check like that that I've seen since we got here, uh, because with COVID and everything, we never, we were off the, the cycle. And, uh, that was the first time I've seen like a loan check not related to the football come in, uh, since we got here, so.
So say, you know how you said like the motor vehicle, like right now it shows only fourteen point two. Would that be either somebody paid their bill late, after, you know, so they come in and they normally do like the end of February or March or whatever it is. So would that be, the fact that we're seeing anything already, is that either late or a car that was purchased after, into the new fiscal year that?
Yeah, so what you're seeing with the three hundred seventy-two thousand, um, all of that is either prior year bills or current year bills, twenty twenty-one. When I mentioned the big first commitment, I'm talking about calendar year twenty twenty-two. So right now, just the fourteen percent alone that we've collected is old, old, uh, old commitments. Um, the big one that we.
Somebody didn't pay by whatever, like March thirty-first or whatever they.
Yeah, they, they, uh, I think they're, every couple of months, we receive a new commitment. So these bills are generated by the district of, uh, or Department of Motor Vehicles.
Yeah.
Sent to the towns and then we collect on them. Um, I believe it's every two months or so that they, uh, they send us a new commitment.
I think in June of this past year, a late commitment.
Cause that's what I was thinking, like, something like that, you're gonna see low, because, so we start our fiscal year in July, and then you know, these bills are going out in, in January to be paid in February or March or February to March, so.
April, May is when this.
So, so when you look at it this time of year, you, you're just not gonna, that's why you'll get a low, low number like that.
But it's good to see that last year at this time, we were at forty-one percent versus forty-three, to get the picture with all the dynamics that go into it.
Yep, and the registry is very behind on their commitments, so that's also.
It was interesting, I, I actually got a bill for twenty twenty, uh, the other, uh, uh, motor vehicle exercise bill for twenty twenty, I was like, what is that? I was like, and I, and I called them, and they said, no, that's for last year's bill. I says, wow, I mean, it took them that long to get it out, so you're absolutely right, that, they're behind getting the stuff out.
Interest-free loan though, so.
It was, that's what it was.
Uh, the next item I wanna talk about was, uh, audits, so, uh, fiscal year twenty, they wrapped that up back in the spring. Uh, we had a clean opinion, there was nothing, um, nothing material that they found that was wrong. Um, right now, they've been doing their field work for about a month now on the fiscal year twenty-one audit. Um, I mean, we haven't heard anything bad, um.
They'll be wrapping it up in about a week and a half.
Yeah, one of the big changes is because of all the grants that we received for COVID, the CARES Act, FEMA. Now, typically, um, a town will have a separate federal grant audit if your grants exceed seven hundred fifty thousand for a given fiscal year. Usually you only see the school side get audited, but because we had the one point five from the CARES Act, um, we've had about six, seven hundred thousand FEMA expenses. So now the town will get audited as well, and, um, that's an extensive, you know, um, audit that's done after the regular financial audit. So that's something new, um, like I said, I mean, they've been around here for about a month now and, um, haven't flagged anything, I mean, everything's good so far. Um, next thing I wanna touch on was, uh, the new positions. So back in, it was earlier this year, right? We, um, so we took a hard look at the structure of the finance department, and what we found was that, um, I mean, there were several areas that were lacking, you know, one of them being procurement. And the other one, um, was on the HR payroll side. So what we then decided to do was we, we eliminated a position that we had that was under finance. It was an IT business analyst, um, position that was created prior to George and I arriving, and we found that there really wasn't a need for such position under finance, the, the other two needs were clearly bigger than that one need, so what we did is we took the funding of that position, split it into two. We created a procurement administrator position and a benefits administrator. So, um, the benefits administrator position, and Apollo will touch a little more on that, so basically that position has taken over the health, dental, uh, retirees. Um, they do, they maintain our accrual, sick vacation, personal, um, they do open enrollment, um, health benefits fare. Um, uh, they basically took on a lot of the things that, um, were kind of divided up within Paula's division. So now we have, you know, a central point of contact for a lot of these functions that were kind of spread all over the place. Um, the other position, the procurement administrator, um, that was, oh, by the way, both of these positions were recommended by our auditors. Uh, the procurement one, um, with that one, uh, where we struggle to find someone, you know, with the experience that would be willing to accept the pay that we could offer here, uh, I, we had to get creative, so I, I have obtained my, um, I'm not sure if you're aware of the, there's the MC PPO program, which is your certi- certification that you can get, um, you know, for being certified and purchasing, and when I went through that program, I met this woman, um, who we used to work over in, uh, Sharon, and she's still doing some work in Mansfield, so I reached out to her, I said, you know, we're thinking of, you know, hiring so-and-so, we would like to bring you on as a consultant to train, you know, that person one-on-one. And also, you know, come up with a brand new set of policies and procedures for procurements, you know, create some, uh, town of Foxborough official contract templates, bid documents, um, and also host several trainings for department heads. So she, I mean, immediately said yes. So she, I mean, immediately said yes. She actually, before she came on board, she actually called the inspector general's office, which is the, the office that oversees the procurement for the whole state. And she asked, no, is there anything I should know about Foxborough? And they said, no, we haven't heard anything from them. So I mean, that told her that we're doing things right. There's, there was nothing for her to be concerned with. So she came in early summer, I want to say, early July. You know, she trained, we have Audrey Strom, she's our procurement administrator. Maureen trained her one-on-one. And throughout the last couple of months, we've created, you know, official town of Foxborough contracts, something we never had before. So now going forward, rather than, the typical process would be that a vendor would draft up their own contract and we would sign and agree to their terms and conditions. Now it's going to be the others, on the flip side, the, the vendor has to use our contract and agree to our terms and conditions. So that gives us a little more protection. And we have, so now we have brand new templates. We hosted about six training sessions where all department heads, including their department administrative assistants, were trained. We revamped the policies and procedures, those will be distributed out. Like I mentioned, you know, Paula will get in a little more into the, the benefits administrator position. I know, like I mentioned earlier, you know, I know it's not shamed upon, but it's, we hear a lot, you know, be creative. You know, don't just ask for, you know, more money, more position. So, you know, I thought long and hard and I figured, you know, eliminating a position that really wasn't needed was the way for us to get the funding that we needed to address some of these needs that we had in the department.
And I heard from Paige, just having that new position that you've spoken about, how, you know, much smoother it made the process go for the Walnut Street RFP. And, you know, she was like amazed at how, you know, she was just able to whip things out and it was a lot, lot more smooth, so.
Yeah.
Five hundred pound gorilla off her back.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, I've kind of heard some first, firsthand anecdotal comments about how great that position has been.
Yeah, it's, you know, giving department heads peace of mind. You know, these are, procurement is, I mean, it's a, you could have a whole department that's just focused on procurement. You know, I've had people come to me, oh, I, I'm, you know, I need to create a contract for this service. Do you have any templates? And I felt bad always saying, no, we don't really have any. But now, now we have all kinds of templates. And, you know, we have a, someone's there as a, you know, as a resource to all departments and we still have Maureen on call. So if we need to do an RFP, I know Paige has a long list of projects as part of her master plan, so. It's good and it gives me also peace of mind because obviously, you know, I come from the accounting side, you know, we have certain rules and laws that we have to follow. So, you know, it gives me personal peace of mind and not saying that we weren't doing things the right way, but, you know, having, you know, the segregation of duties, which that's a big thing in the accounting world. And, you know, having, you know, someone you can go to rather than, oh, I think this person does this thing. Oh, wait a minute, she does that. Like now we have a procurement person, you could go to them. You have a benefits person, you can go to them. And, I mean, there's still more work to do, but, you know, that's, that's a good start in my opinion.
That's nice to hear because I, I think at the last update, if I recall.
I was like shocked at what Paula was doing.
Exactly. I remember Leah, I remember Leah saying, how are things, Paula? And you had this side, the first thing that came over your face was this side.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, you know, I mean, I can't help because, you know, because my husband works with benefits on the school side. You know, it, it was just, I thought it was a little bizarre that, that part of Paula's, you know, under her, you know, was, was doing it. And, you know, and I think that's probably why we originally brought Mary Beth in and, you know, HR wasn't being done that well and that, you know. So, and, and no offense, Mike, but I thought that should have been coming under your hat a little bit more than, than Paula's hat. So the fact that you guys have found a way to work it out, you know, it's nice to see a change. Like, you know, I think Leah proposed these updates so that we would know how things are going. And it's nice to hear that something that maybe wasn't so great at the last update, now that you guys have found a way to, you know, at least for me, I, I think that's, you know, that's probably goes to show that now we know because Leah's decided to have you guys come in and kind of get us, you know, up to date. It's nice to hear that anyhow.
So one of the things, there were a number of HR things that were happening in HR that were actually being handled by HR. But, but then, but it didn't make sense for even them to be handling. There are more transactional issues such as tracking, you know, people's leave time, you know, processing through on some of those, some of the pay, pay, pay change forms, things of that nature. So this, the way this was able to be straightened out was beneficial to both HR as well as, as well as payroll. So, and, and treasury collection. So, you know, it, it is traditional unfortunately, and even though I know it does, it sounds a little strange, even from the private sector that, that benefits come under the treasury, but that is pretty standard. But, but it doesn't make sense, at least it didn't make sense to me, and I'm really glad that, you know, the folks came up with a really good idea to do this, was to really break that out and say, look, you know, payroll and, and benefits needs to be handled on the separate, on the separate roof, or separate division, so to speak. And it's, it's actually worked out very, very well. It's given, it's taken a few points off of Paula's blood pressure, I think, in this process. So, so I'm glad to see that.
I hope that makes your day a lot more manageable, taking that off your plate.
She's been smiling a little bit more lately.
A little bit more.
She even bought me coffee last week.
I could also, Madam Chair, if I could also comment on that as well. You know, at a point when we have seven union contracts being negotiated simultaneously, at the same time that we're recruiting, you know, thirteen positions with, with, you know, one and a half HR, you know, positions. It's, you know, having.
It's lost.
Yeah, having, having somebody to do benefits is, is really important. So I, I can tell you that on most days, Paula's gray truck and my white truck are usually the last ones out of the parking lot. So the, the pack isn't let down yet. She's still working very hard, but I know it's, it's of help to her to at least have a, a full staff. So I'm glad to see that.
So we are at full staff now?
Yes.
Yeah. Yes. And not only that, everyone is, you know, being cross-trained that way. You know, if someone goes out, they don't have to feel guilty that, or come back to a pile, a pile on their desk. Yeah.
I'm going to steal one of Mike's terms, which, which was very alarming at the time. We had a number of what he describes as critical points of failure, where if, you know, you're on a wing and a prayer, if somebody's out or something tragic happened, it's like, where do we go from here? That, you know, we've lost the one person that can do this. Now, there's a few people, there's a few backups in, in each area, including the assessors and, and the, and the accountant too, even with Kathy.
And, let's see here, next item is budget book updates. So we'll be using the same template that we used last year for the budget book. One of my, it's one of my personal goals, but I know it's a town goal as well, is to eventually go for the distinguished budget award through the GFOA. So in order to get there, little by little, I'm incorporating more things into the budget book. One of the things I ask departments to add to their sections is to add any achievements accomplished in the previous fiscal year, any goals, short-term and long-term. And then in a lot of budget books, you see performance indicators. So for example, in a police department, you would see maybe a chart showing how many calls they responded to and the types of calls. Fire would be, you know, how many fires, how many times was there ambulance, you know, dispatch. Public works would be how many roads, you know, did you pave? A lot of different performance indicators. So those are the three new things you'll see, you know, in the budget books.
And I think we, that kind of ties into one of Bill's goals too, that we had the savings and achievements, you know, at the department level too. So that's, that's nice to see.
Yeah, I figured it would, it's good. I mean, it, it's a GFOA recommended practice. But I also think it's, it's good, you know, for you not only to see this is what we're asking for, but you see why, you'll see why we're asking for what, you know, what we're asking for.
You know what I'd love to see in a budget book would be this year, for this year's budget season, twenty twenty-one actual with twenty twenty-one budget, so that we can see how well we did budgeting. Basically for, I know it's a year past, but in twenty twenty-four, we would see twenty twenty-two. So that we're actually saying, okay, this is what we said we were going to do, twenty twenty-one, this is what we actually did.
And I usually hold my two budget books, so.
Yeah, so we don't have to do that.
That's a way to do, yeah, that's a way to do it, you know.
Yeah, we, usually in the, the budget books, you see, it's either two or three years of actuals, you know, previous fiscal years. You show what the current budget is and then what the proposed budget is. So it looks like what you're asking is to then also include, so for the FY twenty-one spending to also show what the budget was.
Yeah. And that's like a, that's a saying, all right, this is what we said we were going to do and this is what we did and here's the difference. Because I'm always struggling with that and, and sort of private sector financing stuff, that's critical to, to sort of see that actual versus plan.
Okay.
Thank you.
But that budget book that you put together was awesome, so it's great to hear. It'll be that same format and then even some improvements on top of it.
Trying to make it more awesome and that. Next item is ClearGov. So we, I think the last time we were here, we, I don't think we had purchased or subscribed to ClearGov yet, but I know.
No, we have, we have logins and everything, but it's been a while, so we might need to refresh.
Yeah, so basically, so ClearGov is, it's a cloud-based software. They have different modules. There's a, when it first came out, it was just strictly an operational budgeting tool. But now they've added personnel budgeting, they've added capital budgeting. They've added a projections module, so you could project out your revenues. And they also have a transparency dashboard, which, I don't know if the link is on our website on the finance page yet, but there is a link to ClearGov. Foxborough has its own webpage that a resident can go on there and they could see revenue and expenditure data going back to, I want to say, twenty seventeen. A resident can go in, you could, you know, you could enter the total of your tax bill and it will show you the breakdown, so exactly where your money's going. It shows us, or shows you the debt that the town has and then some census data showing, you know, the average age of the residents, average home value, the income, a lot of informational data is on there. So that, that link should be, if it's not already, on the finance website. And if you, if, if it's not on there yet, you could just go to cleargov.com if you type in Foxborough. It should pull the page right up. So one of, two of the modules that we recently subscribed to are the personnel and the capital budgeting. The personnel module is, I mean, it's, it allows you to budget for your, you know, all the different unions that you have. When you go through, you know, collective bargaining and negotiating all those contracts, this module allows you to create different scenarios. So say if you didn't know if you wanted to propose a one percent, a one point, point five, a two, two and a half, you could have as many different scenarios as you want. And it gives you a cost. So, you know, when you're negotiating with seven different unions, you could essentially, the software can do the work for you. I mean, there's the setup involved where you have to upload all the unions, the pay tables, the employees and all of that. And that's something I've been working on. But once that's all set up, it will, you know, cut down, you know, on a lot of the time that we spend, you know, mainly manipulating the numbers on a spreadsheet. The capital module, we used it last year. I don't know if, if you guys watched the, the CIP meeting back in March. So back then, that was their, essentially their beta version of the capital budgeting module. They've made a lot of enhancements and, I mean, you guys will get to see that once we, you know, have that CIP meeting. I know they've had it, just like in the personnel module, they have scenario planning, they have the same features in the capital budgeting and you could project out. So I know we usually try to do a five-year capital improvement plan, so that's something you could do in ClearGov. You know, departments can submit pictures, a lot of, you know, data to back up their requests. And one of the cool new features that they added is you can, what's the word? So you know how when, when we have the CIP meeting, usually we'll ask, you know, the, the members of the committee to rate the projects, you know, one to three. The software actually does that for you. So at that meeting, you know, I'll send an invite to everyone who's on the committee and, you know, they'll go on rate their projects, you know, in order of importance. And it will tally all that up.
Tabulates it?
Yes.
Yeah, whereas it used to be like an old, like a form.
Yeah, last, last, earlier this year, I did it all on a spreadsheet. Like I sat there, okay, one's one, 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 one. Now we'll be using, you know, a software just to, you know, make things a little easier. And you could run different kinds of reports, you know, it prints out. One of the other modules that I failed to mention is ClearGov has an actual budget book builder, which, what it does is it takes everything. So everything that you put in your capital budget and your operational budget and your personal budget, it combines it all and essentially creates a budget book which conforms to the GFOA criteria. So, you know, once we have everything that we need, you know, you could literally push a button and it will create your budget book. And it creates a virtual budget book, but you could also print it out. And I, I'll try to find some samples of their virtual budget books, just so you guys can see. I mean, they have a lot of, a lot of cool features. Finally, just an update on the grants. So CARES Act has now been fully spent. That grant has been closed out. FEMA, we still have two projects kind of sitting out there in limbo. You know, with FEMA, they, they keep changing their, you know, their guidelines. And for some reason, they have this thing against school departments. I do not understand their reasoning. They make no sense, so. But we have two projects sitting out there. We do have a consultant that we've been working with who used to work for FEMA, so she knows the ins and outs. And that's been a tremendous help. So there's two grants, you know, sitting out there for FEMA and then ARPA. And I know Bill will be touching upon that a little later. But that's, that's a big question mark.
Another moving target.
And then finally, we, Christine and I collaborated, collaborated recently on, you know, revamping the finance page. There was a lot of outdated information on there, so we try, so we, we got rid of a lot of that information and now have a central point where anyone can go on, you could see our budget books, you could see our financial statements, you could see our, our OPEB and pension actuarial, actuarial reports. You could see all of our bond issuances and the, the official statements that get released when those bond issuances occur. You know, in the spirit of transparency and like I mentioned, there's that ClearGov page, which anyone can go on there and kind of see where your, your tax dollars are going. I know we get asked that a lot. And I think that was, that was it. So I'll pass it on to Paula.
Okay. So our benefits, new benefits persons working on two open enrollments. Retirees Medicare supplements enrolled for January. And then we just did an additional life insurance, Boston Mutual Life Insurance open enrollment. A lot of people didn't get the option to sign on, or they didn't realize that when they first got hired, if they didn't take that insurance, that we didn't do an open enrollment for it every year because it's life insurance, you know, they don't just, like, you open enroll anytime. So anyhow, we were able to get Boston Mutual, our, the new benefits person was able to get them to open it up for us and have sort of a,
That's nice.
We can catch everybody that, you know, is, is newer and didn't get it, or anyone who's been here a long time and didn't need it when they, you know, they originally got hired, but now they want it. So that's, that's a good thing. I don't know when they'll do it again or if they'll do it again, so I'm hoping people. are taking advantage of it. It's going on right now through December 5th, I think, so I, I don't have the numbers yet of how many people, you know, are signing up. And, um, you know, there's basically short-term disability, long-term disability, there's a critical illness, there's a supplemental life, there's, uh, there's a bunch of different plans that people can, um, sign up for. Oh, and we're adding a whole life also. Right now, we have a term life policy for anyone who's a town employee, but people can sign up for this whole life, and it's portable. Right now, the life insurance you have with the town, if you no longer work for the town, it's gone. So you can, um, take this one with you, it's more of a, some people like it, and since when you retire, the life insurance value goes down quite a bit, some people would like that, if they can port this. So that's what she's kind of working on. She's also working on, we're working on the audit with the auditors, but we just finished the OPEB audit. That's a lot of statistical numbers we have to pull for, again, for insurance-type numbers, um, you know, how many are on this plan, how many are on that plan, how many are over this age. We're doing a lot of training of each other, so, so we can have cross-training all around, but, um, it's really kind of nice to have enough people to do that.
Yeah, you didn't have that luxury before.
Yeah, you know, so it's kind of great, because the two people, the new payroll person and the benefits person, both have complementary, you know, knowledge and skills, and both come from a munis background, towns that had munis, so it's great, because they're, they kind of understand right off the bat, so they're training each other, and, um, say one has a really strong background in accruals, but the other one didn't, but then the, the other one comes in and has a very strong background, something else, so it's, it's kind of working out nice. And then, what else do we have? So I have a new collections coordinator, so I have a nine-month person, I have a five-month payroll person, and the benefits person's only four months, so it's, everybody's pretty new.
So is that staff on the page up to date? Is that, that, that one's all up to date?
Yeah. Um, and of course, I have Veronica, the assistant treasurer collector, she's been there a while. Both Veronica and, and Julie, the benefits person, are working on this Norfolk County retirement. They're trying to get a little more, um, upgraded. I think they basically keyed in our deductions for our retirement on their end, so they're, they're doing a big project, we're trying to get everything electronic, so our payroll files every two weeks are gonna go to them, it's gonna go right to the people. Currently, they're like three months behind.
Thank God, thank God, we've been hoping for that for years.
If you went on to Norfolk County right now and tried to look at your balances, it's running like three months behind.
Yeah.
So if you're thinking of retiring the next month, you, you know, you don't really have.
You don't really know where you stand.
No, you don't have good numbers, so, so that's been a big project. Um, there's been a lot of testing with that, and, um, it's going pretty well, we're just about there, they're gonna start it January 1st, they're going, they're going live, but, um, we did a lot of the testing with them, so. And we're like this close. We, you know, maybe one or two errors every, every file now, so, so that's good.
That's good news.
Um, let's see, tax collections for the first half are at about 98%. We sent out 6,500 bills, 6,518 bills, so, um, that's actually pretty good, considering everything that's been going on in the world, I think. People are still paying, which is good.
What was the number, Paula? Where are, where are you guys at?
98.
98.
Last year, when we would finish, we did the 99. So we did, we, nothing ever, it was only our locals that got, we got pummeled on, you know.
Yep. So we were also, we just did the senior tax payroll, which kind of sits out there till we get the actual tax bills done, and then the credits go on, but we have to prep that all first, do an actual payroll that doesn't really create payroll checks, it creates these credits, and then the assessors have to set them all up for the tax bills. So working on that, we, um, we did our piece, I'm gonna pass it off to Kelly in the assessor's department.
So Paula, so, so when the seniors do, um, that work, was there, at one point, I, I want to feel like maybe we heard it during AdCom, Seth, I don't know if this is gonna ring a bell to you, there was some question on then whether the seniors had to use that income as, you had to file that with their taxes? Is that still how that works? When you were just saying, is, is, so we found a way for them to truly just do this, and it is the credit for their, for their tax bill?
Goes right onto their tax bill.
Yeah, but so they don't, also don't have, um, don't have to file that with their personal taxes.
No.
At one point, was there some question on that, like, maybe two or three years ago? Was that ringing a bell to you at all, Seth?
It was.
Cause we had a couple of warrant articles about, like, the different numbers, you know, how much people would make.
I think there was an issue with the IRS, where they were trying to say that they had, they, they, they had a reported as income, and it became a little bit of a.
Which kind of defeats the purpose.
It defeats the purpose, yeah, it defeats the purpose. So I think, and ultimately, I think I figured out.
So what, what we did to address that, because it did, it was an IRS, um, issue, um, so folks, folks were able to get, you know, X number of, of credits, was it $850 or?
Something, yeah.
Um, off their, off the tax bill, for working at the minimum wage, um, in various, um, capacities in, in departments. Um, the IRS, you know, poked its head and said, no, you can't do that, you gotta make them employees and pay them as employees. So what we did was, we, we raised the amount of hours that they could work, raised the amount of credits they could get, and then tax came off of that, so that, so that the seniors were, were still receiving the same amount of tax credit, um, but were working more to get that same credit. Uh, but, so we worked very hard to not hurt our seniors who were working hard in that program, that's how that worked.
Cause the way, the way you were explaining it, how you did, that's what was making me think that, like, oh, you've, you've found a way to, to just almost just do the credit, rather than maybe issue a paycheck, and then, and then they, they use that to pay their taxes.
So they're not getting a, they're not getting a paycheck?
Yeah.
It is, it is still handled as a credit.
But before, you had to issue them a paycheck, right?
It would have been taxable if they did receive a paycheck, so in this way, it sort of would.
Yeah, which is great, because the other way, it just defeats the whole purpose of having the benefit to help them.
No question.
Okay, thank you.
Um, also, water liens is something else that we have to kind of create, and get those to, onto the tax bills. Those we have to weigh closer to, you know, as close as possible, because what happens is, the past due water comes right out of their water account and gets put on the real estate. So in that interim period, when we're working on creating the tax bills, and before they mailed out, those balances are off their water accounts, so we have to do that as close to the tax billing as possible. So we put together a warning letter and send those out a couple months ago, we give people a month, you know, to, to pay it, so we won't lean it to their real estate. And, um, that usually works pretty well. And we'll be doing those probably, well, it depends on when the, the state approves our tax rate and all that good stuff. And then, we'll work on generating the bills, get all those things on there, any abatements we need to do, credits, liens, um, that's about it.
All right, great, well, it's nice to have you guys in, good update. And I think we're gonna continue talking budget, just as we move into the next item. I don't know how many of you guys are staying, I probably imagine George and at least Marie, I don't know, you know, Tom, Paula, if you guys want to go or stay, it's up, up to you.
Put a hat on.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
My dog's waiting.
Thanks, John.
All right, so the next item that we're talking about is our budget direction for fiscal year '23. So we had the budget summit, we thought we'd let things sit and percolate for a little bit, and make, you know, not make a decision too early, kind of see how things played out particularly around, you know, receipts and such, as long as we could. So we're back here tonight to formally give direction on fiscal year '23's budget. So, you know, it would be maintain the same budget, so have, have no increase, which means services would go down, to increase the budget by 2.5%. Or there's a third motion in here to maintain the budget at fiscal year 2022, plus any incremental cost to maintain service levels, so that's kind of there in the middle. And then after that, a couple other items had come up that I just thought made sense to tag on to the, the budget discussion. One is about long-term capital improvement planning, which Doc had suggested, and then the other item is a free cash discussion, which Seth had kind of just teed up, and we haven't really talked about as a board, so those, those two items under 4.2, I just wanted to, to have some sort of discussion, as, you know, people have come to Bill separately and discussions have happened, just wanted to get us together. So, um, with that, I don't know, Bill, if you're gonna kick off the discussion on the fiscal year '23 budget, or?
Sure. So, um, I'll, I'll try and summarize it best as, as I can. So we've, um, been listening long and hard about, you know, what folks have been trying to do, and we are concerned about FY '23 being the year, sort of like the, I think it's really the, the year that will get us through to the other side, because I think, um, if you look at what's gonna happen in '23 and '24, revenues are actually gonna start to tick up again, because we starting to see us return to somewhat a level of normality from, after COVID. And so, uh, events, uh, and, and people using restaurants and hotels are already starting to tick up, and we're starting to see those numbers come in accordingly. Events that you let are starting to return, um, we, um, both Leah and the chair and I both heard from the Craft Group that there are a number of contracts planned for FY ' '23, that should really help revenue situation there as well. So we could start to return back to some level of normality. Um, the, the impact that we took, uh, though it's interesting to point out that we actually had to, and end up with a better free cash position initially than we did last year. So, but still, you know, we're, we're still concerned about, you know, having the ability to pay for capital improvements. And I'll get into the ARPA discussion in a little while, which sort of plays into that, but, but we're concerned about making sure that we make it all fit together. We're, you know, in the midst of negotiating seven different contracts, so obviously we wanna make sure that we have enough money, uh, to maintain competitiveness, but by the same token, not, you know, put us in a position where we have to put people, uh, put people out the door. We don't want to do that either. So, um, all in all, I mean, last year, we were just under 3%, I think we're running around, um, around 2.9, 2.8, in that range, in terms of the overall budget growth. I'm gonna say to you that 2.5 is really, really minimal, that you can do if you want to maintain services, um, because normally, normal growth, and I had this conversation with a lot of my colleagues last week down in Cape, in a, in a meeting that we went to, their normal growth is 3% to 4%, that's just normal growth, because of increases in, in pension costs, and, 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 uh, health insurance, uh, and, um, in, uh, wages, growth of, of expenses, fuel costs alone of this year are gonna really push the number higher this year. Uh, so we're, those are just normal operating costs that, that people are still facing on their, in their home budgets, they're facing those same concerns. So we face those same things as well. So I, I'd be lying to you if I didn't, if I told you that it would be difficult for us to even make 2.5, but we're gonna try. And I think the reason we can do that is because, if you just heard, there's a lot of creative ideas that we put into place, we've used revenues that we already had and trying to, and reshape them into something that made better sense. Um, I think there's an opportunity for us to reshape a few operations this year, uh, to make them function more efficiently. I think that's a possibility too, so I, I'm reluctant to get into that detail now, but I do think that's a possibility. And I think that, um, generally speaking, we've, we've, we've got to the point where people are running pretty lean and mean for the most part, we're not, we're not overly staffed in any one operation. I mean, Mike will tell you that he probably could use a full-time position in HR, but we're not gonna be able to afford that, as opposed to, you know, a halftime position. So, uh, so we've been creative on that front as well, by able, when, when the last person left, Sarah left, she was at X in terms of her pay, the new person came in at a lower rate, so we're able to actually, you know, um, actually slot in some additional hours to make that, make that work more for us operationally. So I think we, we've been creative along the way, I just don't know how much creativity we can, we can lean on at this point. And I think that we're at a point where, um, I've had this conversation with Bill Yuchner as well, uh, so we're not, we're not looking to, to, to break the bank in any way, shape, or form, uh, but we're, we're trying to be realistic as well. And I just think that people do like the services in Foxborough. Um, I, you know, we say, we try to cut the budget, okay, it's one thing to say to cut the budget, but then tell me what services you want to cut, because then that becomes the real debate. So I think that's where we have to get into, if we're gonna get into that position, but I'll defer to George and Marie if they have any further thoughts on that.
Well, I, I think that one of the things that Bill brought up, I think it's, it's been very subtle, and it came up ahead of time when we were, were creating the budget. I mean, you know, we've only had a couple of, uh, uh, meetings together, Marie and, Bill and I and Mike, uh, you know, starting, I think the underlying, um, the underlying, uh, motive was to try to do on a maybe larger scale what was, what Marie had discussed, what we had done in the, um, the finance office, only do it in, in other places to see if we could tighten up the operation a bit. And I, in following in Bill's lead, I don't want to, um, start talking about it until he's made the decision as to where he's gonna go, but that's something I do believe, um, that, that, you know, you try to take the same pie, cut it up, and make it a little more efficient than, than it was before, and I think he wants to continue on with that. I do tend to agree that, that the 2.5 that he's, he's speaking about is, when you have, um, increases like your health insurance, your, um, those, those are like your big ones, suddenly the, the, that 2.5%, which is only, only a couple of million dollars, which sounds a lot to somebody at home, but it goes, it, it gets eaten up fast. And, um, 2.5% is probably in line with where, um, where most of the towns are now. Earlier, Marie had put together, I think it was, if you were to take a look, we had a chart done up of, if you look at, in the past, what the, the total, um, budgets were, if you went back to 13, it went up by 3.43, 14, it went up by 2.98. It was up 422 in 15, 519 in 16, 17 was 462, 456 for 18, 380 for 19, 535 for 20, and then it went down for the last couple of years to 280 and 276. So I think that, you know, the, the trend is, you know, is much more towards the 3 and the 3.5, and we're working with 2.5 right at the moment, so I, I tend to concur with Bill that, that this is about where you can go without starting to go backwards.
And I think at least for me, you know, we understand that salaries are gonna go up, but, you know, looking and telling the story about where we are finding the savings. So like finance, you know, we can't just sit back and dial up, you know, supplies, or, you know, whatever it may be that we do have control of. So I think that's where we're looking for that, at least, uh, maybe for me, that's where we're looking to have some of that creativity, and then not only have it, but hear the story and know what's happening, and tell us, and tell taxpayers we were getting that, rather than, you know, because I think in the cha, in the private world, we're all challenged to do more with less, find more, be creative. And I do think that while the municipal world does that, there's definitely, it's, it's not as much as in, as in the private world. Um, so I think that's where we're looking to just, you know, reinforce that message, hear the story, tell the story, and, and do it.
Well, one of the things that I, I think that, that, um, I, I, I'm not giving away anything that Bill has got planned, because that was already announced, but, for example, we're going to consolidate this year gasoline account. Now, that'll give us a better readout of what are we actually spending, rather than having, you know, a certain amount up here and some down here. Unfortunately, though, going back to the, to the main problem, I think we all know that gasoline account, wherever it was last year, it's gonna be up 30 or 40%.
And if it comes out of that department, that money has to come out, they don't get.
Right.
That doesn't stay, yeah.
Right, right. We're just gonna take it from here, put it over here, so that at least you can say, where's our gas right now? Well, I mean, well, there's a little bit coming out of here, there's a little bit, no, no, it's right here, okay? Last year, it was 200,000, right now, we're up to 240, you know, and you got a better idea of at least where things are. That's an example.
And we, we've, um...
And we've, you, you can go, Bill.
No, I was just going to say, so, you know, we've, you know, I know there's a lot of talk about, you know, private versus public. But that was exactly the conversation we had last week when I was, at the meeting I was at. Where people a lot of times will make that, that comparison. There are some things we can do that make, that's, that should be businesslike. The challenge we face in the public sector, this is a public process. And so what happens is that when you're, you're a bottom line company and you're, you're, you have to, you have to make sure that you meet the requirements of your, of your, of your, of your, of your your board of directors and your, and your, whereas in this situation.
Your consumers, it's not even, that's only if you're, that's only if you're a publicly held company.
Publicly held, but but having said that, that process is a little bit more easier done than the one if it's a public process where you have to go to an open town meeting and people say, no, I don't think I really want to do that. So I think that's, the challenge we face is keeping the balance. And I think that's what we're trying to do here. We're not trying to over, overreach. We're not trying, and it's clear, you've seen it in the past two years, we haven't tried to overreach. And even the years before, we weren't, weren't either, but that was because the organization wasn't built for the way it should be, should have been built years before. So I think that's the challenge we've, we're constantly facing. I do think George is 100% right, that we do have areas that we can look at. And and due respect to what you just said, Natalie, is that, you know, we, I, if you were flying the wall in the meeting I had with the department heads the other day, that's exactly what I said.
Especially with the procurement, like thinking about how we can even use that internally for purchasing or, you know, whatever it may be.
You said, you know, just don't jump your, your, your budget by two and a half percent in each line. And I was even so, so clear about the fact that I said, look, if you start coming in here with, with additional positions and lines that exceed that number, I'm going to send it back to you. You're going to send it back and fix it. So we're going to be very, very strict about that process this year, more so than we have in the past. Because I think this is a year we have to do that to get us through to the other side. And I think we'll, we'll be able to do it, because I do believe in the, in the, in the work that the department heads are doing, it's terrific work. But we will be challenged in some areas. And if, once we do that and we identify those, those are the things we'll have to discuss further.
With, with respect to creative problem solving and and looking at, you know, how do we, how do we solve things differently? You know, as in the way Marie described, things that we're doing in the, the finance department, we've been doing that all over town. For example, we knew one of those critical points of failure was in the water billing over in, over in DPW. And that was, one person had the skills, experience and knowledge to do that. If that one person, fortunately, she didn't have a long-term illness or something that took her away. But had she had that, we would not be able to have done the water billing. And that would have, that would have really crippled us at, you know, if it was at that, that time. So what we've done in that particular instance is we went and took, okay, how do we double up those skills there without adding another person? So we did that. We got cross-training and we're able to add that redundancy to avoid what could be a critical point of failure. And we've looked all throughout the organization on how do we do that? And in our hiring processes, we look at, okay, you meet, you meet the, the standard, you've got everything that we need. Now what else are you bringing to the table? We're kind of taking that Bill Belichick look of where can I plug you in, in someplace else in the organization?
Like that example, though, to me, that's just table stakes. That's, you need to have a business continuity plan. I'm talking more like creative savings stuff. So that, that's also important, but that's not.
Well, I only mention that because a couple of times we've talked about, you know, these positions. I want to, I want to be clear that these, this is, we're not adding other, that's not adding, as we have backup players to fill these functions. We're, we're doing that, and we're working very hard throughout the organization to do that with what we've got, as well as anyone we, that we bring on. What else can you do that crosses over into another function? So that's, that's the only reason I mentioned that.
And it's more skill-based hiring today as opposed to just, well, I worked in this town over here. And and I can point to at least six different examples where the person had no municipal experience and yet they were able to fill the need that we have because we looked at his skill set. And it's far more important to us in this, in this hiring process now.
So it, it sounds like you're recommending the third motion, motion to support a fiscal year 23 budget increase of up to 2.5%.
With a, with a caveat that, you know, I'm going to do everything I can to make that happen. I just, but it just, I can't guarantee, if some of the numbers come in beyond my reach in doing that, I'm going to have to tell you that.
And that's where, that you're going to have to be creative, is what we're asking, to find that somewhere else rather than turn up the dial again. So if I'm looking at this correctly, that this would be the, the smallest increase in the last, since fiscal year 2013 that we're looking at.
Yes. So the second motion, right, so, so I, I, I get the first one is not attainable because we, we have contracts. Yeah, we, you know, and, and we're not looking to do that. But the second motion was says incremental, I knew it was going to come out funny, incremental costs. So won't that, so to me, that's going to cover things that, so what goes up. Like you, you can't control what your gas bill, someone else is controlling that, what your gas bill, you know? And you're going to, you know, other than maybe getting a little creative and saying, okay, well, listen, if we're going to drive around town, let's, you know, you know, we're not going to drive here, come back, then drive there and come back. We're going to go from there to there, okay? But a lot of those costs are out of your hands. You know, you can get a little creative with things like that. But wouldn't that bring us, like, so here, here's the problem I have with that whole municipality private. You know, it's easy to say that, but most of, you know, almost all, a couple of people, you know, my husband works for the town. You have people, you know, scattered around that are paying taxes that work for the town. But it's hard for me to sit back and listen that a lot of people didn't get raises this past year. Because and and your, your option was, you're not going to get a raise or, or we're going to have to make cuts. So we chose not to go that route with our contracts. And, and so I would, I would rather us stay level services with knowing that there are costs that are going to go up, that aren't going to be, you know, at a, you know, control, you know, the raises, the cost of energy, you know, gas, electric, you know, whatever, supplies. Do I have that right, that that's what that would cover?
Right, but also, because I think that we try to give some level of flexibility on the two and a half issue. Because if there's opportunity, opportunity costs that we can achieve by spending a little bit more in some area versus another, we might be able to do that with a two and a half increase. Whereas the incremental one, and, and the, and the biggest danger I feel, and this is a real issue, Stephanie, is that if you do not maintain comparability, we will not get people to come. And that's, we're seeing it already with, you know, 13 vacancies right now. I've never seen 13 vacancies here before, ever, ever. And I, and the problem we're having right now, we can't get people to even apply. And if we're going to be uncompetitive and not provide competitive wages to the communities around us, if everybody around us was saying no, no increases, that'd be one thing, but nobody's doing that.
Aren't those wages covered in motion two?
Yeah, I read motion two as like, those can dial up, but like, supplies or things you can control, those would stay level. But maybe you just need to explain what that one means.
I don't think so.
No?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, it says except costs, which to me is, it's plus you can't control, correct?
Well, in a large, to a larger extent, yes, because a lot of the compensation is contractual. And then what we know of supplies and other non-people costs is that inflation is rampant right now. I mean, it's not like Venezuela, but it's higher than it's been in years. And costs are going to go up. So this sort of arbitrary is 2.5% in, in motion three, that's not going to be level service.
No, but am I not understanding what those costs are? I, I thought, I thought, I thought that's going to be that anything above that has gone up from last year. I thought number two would be like, we're not hiring anybody else.
It is, it's level service, but it's going to be a higher number than 2.5%.
Right, in other words, what you're saying is if we do go with the 2.5, we're probably going to be losing something anyway.
Be below level service.
So the third one would actually be safer putting the 2.5% cap.
That's like in the middle between level service and level funding.
And it seems like to me it's a more finite way for them to make their budget than two seems like a moving target to me.
And, and how do departments work?
Right, right, how are you going to explain to the department heads two, you know, option two?
Yeah, like you're three, but now you're going to be one and a half, so.
Right, yeah, yeah, that's, oh, God, that's a nightmare, yeah.
So that, that's not covered in motion two?
No.
The raises and stuff are not covered in motion two?
It's covered, it's, but I'm trying to, trying to limit it at this point, is what I'm saying to you, to a 2.5% growth factor. But, you know, again, I, I can't make that promise to you. I will tell you, we will strive for that and we'll do everything we can to get to that point.
I guess for me, the, the word level service, like, I'm okay with taking care of the people we have now and what it costs to run the town. If paper towels go up a dollar a roll, then we have to, we have to pay it. I just don't want to see us, you know, I want the control of not adding more people, not, you know, at least, at least for the year. Just because with what the year we've had, you know, you know what I'm saying? Like, we're talking about budget for next, for, for, for 23. I'm not saying forever, but that's why I'm leaning towards that word, level service. Like, I don't want the town to, and I don't think anybody wants to lose the services they have. I guess maybe I'm somewhere between two and three, you know what I mean?
But I think even three keeps it at level services.
Because you're not, like you said, you're not going to make it on two and a half.
Well, we may have made it.
Especially with the school side, you know, with all the, the expenses they're going to have, you know.
And they've got down pat that there's no added positions, there's no extemporaneous stuff.
No, if this was six, seven, eight years ago, I would say we're in a different position today than we were then. Because I think we've, we've filled the needs that we've, that we've had for getting the organization to where it should be to run efficiently. And it was an old saying that maybe, you know, some of you remember this, where Andy said, we're actually efficient to the point of being inefficient. In other words, we're not spending enough to actually run the organization efficiently. I think we're at a point now where we are efficient in how we're doing things. But I do think that I don't feel the need to add a lot of new people at this point in time.
See, Bill, you're saying that you, you feel to add a lot of new people. I, I want to stay away from the new hires. So that's why I think I'm falling somewhere between two motion.
There's no new hires in level service, number two.
Well, that, that's, I think that's why for me, motion three doesn't say level service. That, that, that's why.
It says limited growth.
Motion three is in effect below level. It's reduced service because your, costs are going to go up higher than 2.5%.
I've thought about this a lot. I mean, I, I understand exactly what you're saying, Stephanie.
So you're, you're recommending the third one?
I am.
Yeah.
I mean, and then, you know, but I can live with the other one, I mean, just, I can live with both of them, but I'm going to tell you.
But with two, what does that look like?
Two, two is, I don't know what that looks like until I get there, but.
Well, that's what I mean, two doesn't say that we can't fulfill our contracts. It doesn't say that we can't spend on, yeah, whatever goes up, goes up. Like, like, nobody can control that. You can't control that, you know, whatever, you know, if our electric bill this year was a million dollars, the next year comes in a million five, you, you need, I, that's how I read two.
I mean, I, I will say it here today and commit to you that I am not going to add new positions, not going to happen. I'll commit to you right now that that's not going to happen.
I appreciate Bill's willingness to talk to number three and sort of sign up for that. But I, I think that's unrealistic to, to try to get to 2.5% at level service. It's just with costs going up and, and a lot of it contractual, it just doesn't.
So it, it sounds like as a board, we're supporting the second one. That's what I'm hearing from you, if that's what I'm hearing correct, so.
I won't, I won't shed a tear if you do that, because I, I just think it's, I do think it's, I was looking at it from the perspective of trying to keep it trim as much as I can. But there's a lot of truth to what you said, you know? I mean, I don't know what's going to happen with some of these numbers. I have no idea where health insurance is going to go, no idea where fuels are going to go. I have no idea where the pension costs, yeah, I don't see that, I don't know what that's like. Those things are going to go up and we don't know.
So basically, Bill, you're saying that if we went with number two, you think we're going to go over 2.5%?
We might, we could very well.
But we could at number three also.
You could, yeah, exactly right.
But at least if we cap it with three, then we cap it. So I, I, my, my suggestion would be to take a motion on number three. And then if you have to come back to us and it goes up higher than that, I don't know where you guys are at as far as motions or, I think, Ed, you were going to say something.
Well, I was just going to say that I see the third option as being the most reasonable to maintain services within the community. You know, and again, I have a different perspective, having lived through 39 years of budgets in my youth. And, you know, seeing what it does do to responses in the community. With the secondary nature of, yes, we have the stadium and it produces a tremendous amount of revenue for the town. But it never covers enough to have the staffing needs that you have to have. And the nightmare that I had, Chief Baker had for his brief tenure, and that Chief Grace is coping with now. You know, to try and get staffing.
But the extra staff, Ed, on a game day.
Is paid for, yes.
On, well, not even just game day, you know, they're required up there to pay for details, you know, so anything that's going on up there is going to come out of their pocket up there, not, not the town's pocket, for above and beyond. Your normal staff you would have on a Thursday night, Friday night, Saturday night.
It stays the same.
Yeah, I guess for me, I just feel like we've added firemen, we've added policemen, you know, so public safety, which is, is for me, is ranked very high for anybody in any community. You, you want to make sure that you're, you're being protective, protected, but we've, we've added that the last two or three years. So I'm just, that's why I.
But have we, they're down staffed, like.
Well, they are down.
Well, they're not.
Because we can't fill positions.
They've had some people leave. It's not that we're not saying you can, you can't, you can't fill those positions.
I don't think they've been fully staffed, though.
But, but, but the positions are budgeted, you know? So I, I just feel like, you know, I don't think we need to go up in services. I guess maybe that's what's, you know, I don't, you want, because you kept nodding at me, so, so do you want to see why I'm, I'm, I'm going towards that word, level service? Now, so, but with, with that says, like, level service does, I mean, number one is the one where, where you'd be like, well, you can't do that.
Yeah, I think one, one's off the table.
Yeah, you can't do that, but.
It's an option, so I have to.
But the word level service in number two and saying that, you know, costs out of your control that are naturally going to go up, we would be able to spend. Now, basically, if you're telling me number three is locking us in at that or trying to lock us in at that number, so I, so what are we going to do? Are we going to come back and, and say, uh-oh, the gas costs more and, but we, we want to stay at that two and a half? So now we're going to make you cut something else. Does, does that make sense?
Yeah, so it, so it's a target, Stephanie. Town's still going to vote. I think two and a half is unrealistic, but I mean, I'm not going to fight for a higher number. If, if we have a town manager who is willing to try to get to two and a half, then, hey, you know what, I'm on board.
So I, I think, I think we should try, okay?
There.
I, I can't, I think we should try, all right? It says the right message to everyone.
Is there a motion in between those two that says that you're, we want to stay level funded, I mean, level, level services? And we would, and like to stay at two and a, at, at 2.5%? Is it like, is there something in between?
It's, it's just not a realistic option because costs are going up, inflation and contractual.
There's no amount of truth to what he's, what he's saying.
So, Ed, the second one actually gives Bill more flexibility.
Yes.
It really does.
Number two is more generous because it's, it's maintaining level services plus the, the ability to, to increase to what's needed. Number, number three, what the town manager has recommended is very restrictive. And he made it very clear with all the department heads, there are no new positions, there are no additional hours to, to keep within what he believes the selectmen are going to vote, because that's what he's recommending. Number three is very restrictive. It's a tight goal to be inside.
I'd like to see that somewhere in number three, because, so you can say that right now, but if we, if we, you know, if we send you that we're okay with the two and a half, what's to stop you from adding a position? That, that's like, like.
It's not going to happen.
It's not going to happen, yeah. It's not going to happen, yeah.
It's not a promise.
I've, I've made that, I'm, I'm saying it publicly right now.
Okay.
George has something.
Well, I, I've often said as, as you go through, a, a budget is a fluid thing. It changes as you go along. And maybe your suggestion is, is that you said it, it's like you say, get the two and a half that Bill wants and cap it. And then subject to review halfway through the, the budget cycle when we start getting.
I like, I like the definition on three versus the, where I realize it might, might, might be hard to reach versus the, how ambiguous.
Ambiguous.
It's ambiguous.
It's a goal, it's a goal.
So I, I would move forward, you know, it sounds like if we take a motion for number three.
It's going to be hard, I'm, I'm taking it, it's a hard position for me to, to complete, but I'll, but I'll, I'm going to try.
The only way to achieve level service at two and a half percent is to find efficiencies because costs are going up. We're not going to add more resources. We need to make existing resources more efficient. And that's the creativity part and that's what.
Right.
That's what you folks are signing up for, so I'd say.
Yeah, and, you know, go back and do your first round of budgets and if, if, you know.
It might not be attainable, but.
The alarms are going off, come back to us, but I, I like the, the, the direction and the numbers.
So, so you think if we had gone with two, chances are, we, we, you know, so we, we would give you the direction to stay level, level service, but you think you would probably go above the two and a half with other costs that you can't.
Yeah, like a fuel and, you know.
Absolutely.
This is November and, and, you know, I won't even see numbers until, you know, late December, so.
Especially with the state.
And I won't even see numbers from the state until end of January. So, and those are preliminary numbers too. So I, our health insurance numbers, we won't even see until February, March.
But I keep hearing how those are looking good, which, you know, coming from the background, I do.
Don't say it.
With people putting off elective surveys, I keep saying the bill, I don't buy it, but, you know.
Well, I'll tell you, we did see.
We're self-funded and, you know, we'll see, we'll see where.
Well, we're not, we're not self, we're not, with the whole state itself and that program itself, but we're individually rated. So, so the difference in Foxborough situation is that we did look at the numbers just a couple of weeks ago and they were, they were, they were creeping up a little bit, but then they, they were heading in the direction where then they stepped back a little bit. So it seems like there was a little bit of a flurry of people doing what you said.
That's exactly what we're going to see everywhere, yeah.
And then I've seen, we've seen a little bit of a step back in the last few months.
And, you know, we're up in the triple digits in COVID cases, so we're still in the thick of it. We don't know what's going to happen, you know?
We may see a break in those, people going for those services again.
Yeah, we don't, we don't know where, where revenues, concerts, health insurance, this, you know, we're, we're not out of the woods yet on COVID. I think we're, we're heading back into.
What I'm telling you, it's a goal, I'm not even sure it's realistic, but we're going to try. And I think that sends the right message to everyone that we're doing the best we can.
Well, and, and I can, I can live with that motion. I, I think when I was leaning towards two, I was actually giving you more wiggle room than the two and a half.
Hold on to that, I may need it later.
You know what I mean? Like, I, because like I said, I don't want to see, I didn't want to see any of the services go down.
Right.
So, you know, so let me ask you, so if, if we throw you in that direction and then, you know, you came and you say, listen, I, I said we try to get to two and a half, but it's going to be three and a half. So if this board tells you to stay at two and a half at that point.
They'll have to figure something out.
Yeah, or you may have to cut people. So, so with that word, level service isn't in there, you know what I'm saying? Like, I don't know, I don't know what we'll do. I mean, that's, that's, you know, down the head, but I think that's why I was trying, believe it or not, trying to stay away from, even though that two and a half sounds good, I wanted to maintain the level service.
So that's a fair point.
You know what I mean?
I, I absolutely agree with you. So my goal is to maintain level services.
And I don't, I don't think the motion will, we won't have the parentheses piece. So I think we're probably ready for the third motion. We still have a lot of budget stuff to discuss tonight, it's 9:15. It feels like we're in agreement, so I think we can probably move forward with that motion.
Motion to support fiscal year 2023 budget increase of 2.5%.
Up to.
Up to 2.5%. What did I say?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, so you've got your direction and then the next step would be to get those numbers together for us to see them. You come back to us if you feel like there's something that we really need to discuss. But like George said, it is a, it's a fluid, budget, budgeting is always a fluid process. Throw COVID into it, you know, and all the, and other uncertainties and, you know, I think.
I mean, I think we've demonstrated to the past, we've, we've come up with two under 3% budgets in the past two years. I'm looking to do, to do the same thing for the third one in a row. And then, you know, at that point, that at least gets us back on a, on a pretty level playing field in terms of where we are revenue wise. So I think we'll be okay going into '24.
All right, so I think with that, and I imagine you two will probably stay. Doc, do you mind just talking about the long-term capital improvement planning that you had asked about? And then, I don't know how much we'll get into the free cash discussion, I just wanted, the rest of the board hasn't heard what you brought to us. You know, maybe if we tee it up and then we have a bigger discussion, I don't know if you and Bill have had a chance to connect. So I don't know that we'll get into the weeds on that, or if we'll just kind of let everyone know what you're, what you're thinking and go from there. Same thing with yours, you know? I don't think we'll make any decisions tonight, but let's just tee it up.
Yeah, I mean, bottom line is, I'm on the committee over at the senior center for the new, for the new senior center. And we had Bill and Mike come speak to us a couple of weeks ago about what the next step for them would be. And bottom line is, Bill, Mike both suggested that we have to see what the town's capital plan is going forward. There's three huge projects that are on the five-year plan. Taylor School, have no idea what that is, you know, with the school side. Certainly, the renovation of DPW is high on Chris's list. And the senior center, we had that survey go out and, and, you know, there's a need for a senior slash rec department center.
Community center.
Community center, thank you, Bill. And Bill said, you know, now we have to sit down as, 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 as a town, us with schools and water and AdCom, about what, what is our plan? What does need to be done going forward, which will then allow the seniors to decide what their next act will be.
Yeah, I, I, I do think that, that this plan has to be one that's adopted by the town, not by the town manager or even the board of selectmen for that matter. It's one that, I think the, the, the community has to weigh in on it and they have to say, what's the priorities? It may come down to a decision that has to be made, it may not be popular in some cases, but at least you will have had the opportunity where you, where people have weighed in on it and, and given their perspective. Because I do think there are three great projects, I think they're all needed, there's no question about it in my mind. But I do think though that the community must play into that before, before you can all make an informed decision as to what you should do.
Yeah, so, you know, Murray, before you got here, there was the town hall and then the Ahern and then the Burl project. And, you know, we had a plan, but now I think we need to kind of reset that and look at that longer-term plan. And we do a good job at CIP, obviously annually, but it sounds to me like it's maybe the CIP committee getting together to have a special session for long-term. Is that what seems like the best way to tackle it? Because everyone you just mentioned has a seat at that table. So Ed for Board of Selectmen, you know, I don't know who AdCom's doing because it was Larry, you know, Chris, Bill, you.
Would it be a smaller committee, do you think, Bill, or would you need all the committees?
Well, I think, I think what we do initially is just put out the three projects and have all three boards weigh in. Because I think, you know, at that point, we need to say, these are the three projects, you know, if you were to, you know, and I think we have a, a good discussion about them, it's like, you know, if we were to, and I think the Water and Sewer Commission weighs in on that as well. Because I do think that if you put those items out there, you really need to get feedback as to what people think the priorities are. And it may come, it may not come out to be an answer that we all expected, but at the end of the day, it'll be one that everybody had debated.
Yeah, it almost seems like a rating system, like you talked about, like a, like a closed ballot rating system type of thing.
What are the three projects?
The DPW building, that's like, was, I don't even know, it's like a temporary building.
That's the existing building.
Like a trail.
The, the, the Taylor School has never been renovated. It literally looks the same as when I went there. My kids just finished stuff, so I can attest to that. So that's the last, that's the only school in town that hasn't been touched. And then obviously the senior center. So I think those, and maybe we need to solicit the group and say, is there anything else? But those seem to be, the three big pressing ones now that we've finished, kind of what I'd call the, the other three that are.
And there are different issues that can be, you know, like for instance, the, the Taylor School will be an SBA project, so that's, and that process takes a while. I mean, Bill, you can already talked about that, it could be five, six years out before you see that. If we finance the, the work on the, on the DPW, maybe you can use, utilize some water, water funds to do that, water and sewer excise revenues to help with that. So it takes some of the burden off the tax rate. And then the third is, is the community center, you know, is there a way to, to offset some of those costs as well?
Yeah, one of the things neat with the community center is you could raise private funds to help with that. And the other thing that Bill and Mike brought up is, you know, looking at some of the long-term debt that might be up soon.
Coming off.
Coming off, aren't there like two big projects?
Twenty-four and twenty-five, I think we see some things.
Yeah, so I think we need to find the right time. Yeah, I think we'd look to you guys to kind of come up with what the plan is, but not, not sit on it, you know.
No, I think it should be sometime in December.
Yeah.
So do you think maybe the CIP committee is the best way to go?
It's in there, isn't it in their chart that they're supposed to do the long-term planning? So that's, that's my gut.
That's fair, we can do that.
Yeah.
Is to start there because everyone has a seat at the table. You know, the only thing is, you know, thinking of the seniors, they may not have, I mean, the board of selectmen obviously will advocate for them, but they don't have the same seat at the table like DPW does or schools does, so.
Yeah, but you're, oh, wait a minute, you're, you're not, who's on?
Ed, Ed.
Ed is, Ed is the current.
Oh, okay, I was going to say you were on the committee.
Yeah, no, and we'll pound it with information.
Unless you're still doing the serving.
Well, do we know that, that, I thought Ed stepped in for.
No, we actually, we actually appointed him for, we'd have to look, but I think that.
It might have ended.
It might.
To the end of the fiscal 20.
Okay, so we'll have to look at that and, and talk about it as a board. I know historically it's been the chair, but I personally don't feel like that has to be me. You know, if, if it's Doc or if it's you or if it's Seth, I'm willing to, to share that, you know, and, and see who's, who's best to sit on that.
I'm not saying it shouldn't be Ed, but I, I believe Doc couldn't go.
I couldn't go.
Yeah.
And, and we, remember we had a, like, all of a sudden, we, we didn't vote to make it Ed. So I didn't know that was permanent, I thought that was just for last year's CIP. Remember, remember, it was like all of a sudden we had.
Yeah, but then we did the appointments, Christina, and I feel like we kept Ed on there.
Yeah, Ed did stay on.
Through the end of May, so I feel, I, I haven't looked at it, but I think based on my recollection. Ed is appointed through May 31st of 2020. Well, we can always, if, you know.
Well, we could always change it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I think it's kind of good to share it from the chair and let, like, you know, I've got my hands in other stuff, but it should be, probably be someone else.
Okay, so let's, let's, let's.
I'll, I'll work on setting up a meeting to do it.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then the next one is the free cash. I'll let you tee that, I think you kind of teed it up last meeting unless I'm confusing it with.
No, you did.
He did, okay.
Some karma.
Because I know him and I, he had sent me, he had sent me something, so I wasn't sure if I was confusing it, so. I think it goes right in line with the budget conversation that we had this evening.
Yeah, absolutely. So, so this conversation was born from the financial policy that, that we reviewed and the board eventually signed off on. And so one of those policies was around free cash. And so I know there's some mechanisms required for free cash recharge, balance maintenance. And I think maybe we got a little bit wrapped around the axle with some of that. And so just to sort of bring it up a level, what my, what my thought is, and not my concern, but what I'm really focused on is, broadly speaking, is, is truth and transparency and budgeting. And so to that end, I'm just thinking about a policy that, you know, will, will stand the test of time and will continue to, to use and makes the most sense for the town. So the things, the, the, the thing that I, that fits with that sort of transparency and budgeting is considering any places where we might use or drive intentional budget variances. And I'm not going to go much deeper than this, but if we're creating variances in the budget as a, as a mechanism to recharge free cash, that's a concern that I might have. So Marie shared some information with me recently that was great, that showed a, a free cash recharge of $3 million and change for 2021. And it showed me the pieces of that. About half of it was insurance variance. There's a half a million dollars in school budget variance, another 300,000 and maybe in police budget variance. So if those happen organically or if those are built into the budget as a way of free cash recharge, that's where I would call out as a point of, you know, this, this is something, this is what I'm concerned about. So that's what the conversation I think would be. And so I just wanted to.
It's like, it's just to me, it's like an insurance policy on, on free cash recharge, basically. Because, you know, the insurance may not happen next year, like you're saying, to budget it in versus.
I'm saying to budget.
You, you were asking whether that was intentionally, like, we over, either overdid it and then we got the money back.
So, yeah, so let me put it, let me put it that way.
Yeah.
George, like, do we, do we intentionally create budget variances in order to recharge free cash?
No, I think what you were seeing last year was an aberration. In fact, we got into the conversation a little bit earlier. The reason that you saw such a huge give back from the insurance company was that normally, if it was probably a normal year, we probably would have spent most of that money right up to the edge. You had the COVID situation, which I, I think you brought up just a little earlier where, well, first of all, nobody was going to the hospital. So essentially, on the end of the insurance company, they had a big cash buildup because everybody's paying their premiums and they gave it back. So I think what you saw, which, which was good for us that year because we had also a, a deficit on the other side on the, on the, but you got that back because of that particular reason. The second, when you mentioned the school department, there was a lot of the CARES Act and, and things like that that came in, which sort of allowed them to say, okay, well, we'll use this money and we'll pay for it and we'll give you the break and we'll give you back the other, for the year. So I think some of that was done intentionally in, in, in aberration year where everybody was working to get the money back. I know Bill was instrumental on the, on the, on the, the health, the health insurance side and, and Bill Yuchner was. But let's say in a normal year, that probably would not have happened, you know?
So that's, that's really, I guess, what I'm getting after.
Yeah.
So that's what I'm getting after. If we're budgeting to what we expect, that, there's a range, there's, you can budget conservatively, you can budget aggressively. But if we expect a million dollars of revenue when we put 57 cents there.
Yeah, exactly.
That's where I'm saying, like, that, that doesn't feel like the right.
No, yeah, we weren't doing that.
No, and I, yeah, I, I made up a goofy example just to.
No, no, I ended, no, I do that too.
But George just described it perfectly, that there, there is, we, the, the, the million-dollar turnback, I've never seen that happen in 40 years.
Right.
So, so that was a really unique situation. The, as far as the, the grants coming in, we were able to use grant money to offset costs in some, in some budgets, including the police department, to offset the cost. So we then turned back the money from the budget, which helped free cash. But that wouldn't happen in a normal year because we didn't have those grants, all right? So the, the only area where we, where we really are clear about, we purposely tried to reduce our revenues, we, we, and we under, we try to underestimate our revenues on, is on, is on the, is on the local revenues.
Right, so that you're not, yeah, yeah.
Because, because, because we don't want to be in a situation where we over-budget for that because then you end up, we could have deficit in that situation.
Right, so, so I guess, and we're going deeper than I was expecting to, but if we're, so the pilot, the one. That's an intentional budget variance in effect, right? Because if we're expecting a pilot, the pilot program to deliver between 2 million and 2.5, then my approach would say, be conservative, put in two. But if we're putting in one, one and a half, we're developed, we're, that's an, that's an intentional budget variance.
But there's, yeah. There's a reason for that because, because that's the only guarantee we have on that money. It's, it's a, we're guaranteed one and a half.
But there's no guarantees on virtually any line item in a budget.
But you know what he's.
Unless it goes, guarantee it's going up.
What, Ed, what Bill's trying to say is this, you, the, the, the pilot program, okay? You get paid the, we'll call it 1.4 right now, it's, it's some change, that's the base amount. The rest was ticket oriented, okay? Last year, we went with 1.4 because that's all we were going to get because they closed the whole thing down, there were no tickets. Yeah, but there were no tickets for the rest of the year and, and that, and we never received, there was no games, there was no.
And that's why there was no recharge for the free cash from local or pilot because expenses, our revenue was actually.
Right, right. So if we had put in for the 2.7, we would have probably had a, a. Right, right. So if we had put in for the 2.7, we would have probably had a big deficit.
Right. In a normal year, I'm suggesting.
Oh, in a normal year, you go under, but not by millions of dollars. No, I mean, you should be under.
Which I think we changed that approach since the former finance director already, for the, so we used to do that, and then, forget COVID. Before COVID happened, we did bump that up, and we weren't using the minimum like we had been in the past, probably when you were on AgCon.
Yeah.
That was that year where the town ended up with an $8 million free cash. It was because of that. He was purposely underestimating these revenues to beef up that free cash. And what George and I have done since we came on board is to be more, I mean, yes, you have to be conservative, and the Department of Revenue only lets you go up so much. So there's that restriction too. But, you know, we try to be realistic. Like, for example, for '22, we're estimating 2.4 million for the pilot.
Instead of the 1.4.
And it's been like 2.7 to 2.8 averaging, okay? So we're a little under.
Yeah, do you remember Randy used to tell us that he used to use, I believe, the minimum number, which I will tell you, yeah, I mean, then it did bring money back to free cash, but the way he did that he did it would have been spot on this year. You just, I mean...
He was doing it in a regular year, though, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But the thing is, there's no, there's no way to predict pandemic, okay? But, you know, but there was some talk of, you know, I mean, hopefully, hopefully Mac will continue playing pretty well, but there was some talk of what would happen when Brady left, when Belichick left, but I will tell you that the bailout from the money that we got really saved us. Because I, like, I get what Seth was saying about, like, it's not so much that I thought, like, nobody knew that money, that the insurance was going to do what it did. But if it hadn't, we would have been in trouble.
It would have been really, really, it would have been tight.
It would have been trouble.
But to your point, I think, I think I know what you're alluding to is, as Marie said, there was a buildup, and it was done intentionally, where they were not using as much so that the free cash was getting larger and larger. But I think it was done with the intent of, remember when I said you guys pulled off that, that non-debt exclusion for a 20-some-odd million dollar, I think he paid it down with free cash, which is why it dropped from 80 million.
With the Borough School.
And then, then, I mean, I myself, I would have done it a different way by just saying, let's take the free cash we got, put it into a stabilization fund or something, and then...
Transparency aligns with that, right? Rather than doing something on, sort of off to the side, that you're like, I don't know if I trust the townspeople to understand what I'm doing here, so I'm just gonna kind of, you know, that's what I'm trying to...
Yeah, I don't think it was done with the evil intentions or anything.
Not the theory, it's just...
It was strictly done to try and...
It was for the right reasons, but the right reasons should be out in the open, and everyone should shake, hold hands and say this.
And I feel like we're there, so maybe...
I feel a lot better than, yeah.
Marie has something to listen to.
I just wanted to add one more thing. That's why, you know, in Bill's message last week to department heads, even finances message to department heads, which I sent instructions today regarding the FY23 budget, is we ask departments to look at every single line in their budget. You know, just because we're recommending two, two and a half, three, whatever it comes out to be, that doesn't mean increase every single one of your lines by that percentage. You know, look at trends. Like, there's a report that I ran for them that shows them the spending in the three previous fiscal years. So I want people to really take a deep look. And what happened in FY21, just like George mentioned, you know, we did receive a lot of grants. The schools, actually, they purchased 3,000 laptops, and we were able to use CARES Act. Otherwise, I mean, that money would have, the 500 they turned back would have been gone if it weren't for, you know, all these grants that we got.
Which creates another issue down the road, by the way. You're gonna replace those in three years. So we're gonna have an issue, we're gonna have to plan for.
Well, we can get rid of those printers, copiers, and cut the paper budget. There's some of it.
Seth. I'll let, you know, you guys can connect if we need to come back and talk about this again, but I feel like we're in a good place. You know, you can continue the conversations with me, Marie, George, and then we'll come back to it.
Just one little bit of context additionally to tie things back, like, when I asked Marie about 2021 actual versus budget, it's getting after, like, those budgets actually seeing a full year actual budget and seeing if there's any variances. And so it all ties in, and I can, that would be really helpful. And it doesn't even have to be in the budget book, but just...
Yeah, I think it's the file called the Analysis of Appropriation. That's a file that I prepare for year end. That one, I mean, shows you your budget, and it shows you what they spent and what was turned or closed out to.
So you gave me that for the free cash piece, and if it's just like they blown out to the whole thing, it's basically that, right?
And you know what, Marie? That little piece that you're adding to the budget book with some of the reasons why certain things are changing is, it'll be very helpful, especially for this board, because at AdCom, they would be sitting with department heads. Some would be sitting, coming back to a board, and we would be, we looked with them line by line, and we would get that explanation. You know, I would just look down and say, oh, you know, whether it went up or down, there's always a reason for an up or a down. So I could say, well, hey, your paper budget went up 10%. So why? And then, when you get a reason why, then you can come back and say, okay, well, it's because of A, B, C. And so that little piece, for me, because I'm looking at the budget completely differently, you know, we had a discussion last year, I'm looking at the budget completely differently than when we were, than when Seth and I were on AdCom, which was hard for me last year, because it wasn't just look at a budget book and come up with a couple of questions for a bill or a department head. At that, to look at that budget, we had a member of our committee looking line by line and speaking with the department head and getting, you know, this is why it's happening, and you can come back. So for me, that's going to be, that addition to your budget book is going to be huge for me anyhow.
Yeah, the key is to have as much information on there, to, you know, make it easier for you guys to make your decisions.
That's awesome. Thank you.
We love your budget books, so.
I hope it stays that way.
All right, you want my report real quick?
Yep, just, you're standing between us and leaving.
Yeah, so I'm gonna be quick.
And this piece application is a little confusing.
Yeah. So, yeah. So the update regarding the Trash Discussion Group, we did, we're working on a survey right now, which we prepared as a draft, and we've gotten, taken some comments. Our next conversation is going to be on the 30th of November to update folks on that. American Rescue Plan Act...
We have a meeting on the 30th of November, that's...
No, no, this is for the, that's the committee to, the Trash, Trash Committee to talk about that. And there's also an update on the, on the review of the special town meeting at that same night. So updating on the American Rescue Plan, so I, we did speak, George and I and Maurice met with Kevin O'Neill, who is the representative for Congressman Auchincloss, who has been working with Congress along with Senator Markey and Senator Warren, on the language that's contained in the American Rescue Plan that actually cripples Foxborough's ability to do, move forward, because during the past year, we were identified, we identified about a four-and-a-half million dollar loss of revenue, but then they offset that with a $6 million SBA grant, which then gave us, gave them the impression that we actually had a one-and-a-half million dollar gain, which makes no sense.
Six and a half million dollars to go.
No, it's at one-and-a-half million to gain over and above the four-and-a-half million dollar loss. So, so the net impact of that, of course, was not accurate. And so we're actually in the process, we're trying to make that case. The MMA is working on that, Jeff Beckwith is working, National League of Cities. We wrote, I wrote a letter to all three, the congressman, the two senators, to try and make our case. And then we're not the only community that's in that bubble. So the good news is that they are very much familiar with that. Kevin O'Neill indicated that they are very familiar with the issue that Foxborough has, as well as other communities. So they are looking to address it, but they're reluctant to say anything until the final rule is out. And that won't be, we don't know when that's going to be. We're hoping it'll be sometime in December, but it could be after the first of the year. So good news is that we still have till 2024 to spend the money, but it gives us, it leaves us in the middle of nowhere to try to determine how we can use the money at this point in time. So more to come in that. The PACE application, I provided some backup information for you. That is a program which, in fact, the town has to sign on to, because it's a, it's a, it's a tax offset for credits against solar improvements, if I want to understand, and that in 23 other states in the country, they actually provide for this. And in Massachusetts, we'd be the newest one to do this. We have a presentation that's coming up on December 2nd on this, so I'll be able to report more to you following that day, as to what the town's role is. But what I understand, we have to actually, if we go onto the tax bill, it'd be, is a credit that would have to be paid for at that point by the applicant.
It's confusing.
It is.
It's detailed, and we're learning more information, but I wanted to let you guys know that this application's out here and get you this information, so you can read the background email and kind of...
Exactly. And there's a slide deck on it, you can take a look at that as well. There were several town common events that I've approved in between the last board meeting and tonight, and there was the J.C.'s decorating the common on November 27th, the Department of Land of the Common on November 27th as well, from 4:00 to 7:00, and the J.C.'s caroling on the common December 22nd from 5:00 to 8:00. And just so everybody's aware, this is the new licensing and permitting system that we're using. This is what the individual gets now, based upon the new system that Katie's been working on. And so this is working out really, really well for us. It's a lot more efficient. I do all these approvals online now. I don't do, there's no paper and pencil for me to even use.
No more interofficing between...
No, it's all circulated around, so it's a really good process. She's done a great job with this. So we're, and also, to her credit, wanted to say this, that she's well ahead of the licensing piece for this year. We have 202 licenses that we issue, and she's already got up to over 150 people that've responded already to her. And so we're getting ready for the December approval, so we're way ahead of that game, and congratulations to her for doing that. So. And a couple of veterans donations that were made, and one from the, one from the Veterans, to the Veterans General Fund donations, $50 from Michelle Rebushka, $85 from Janine Fernandez, $100 from David C. Nolan, an historical commission, $30 donation from Kathleen Belkow for cemetery restoration, and there was, and those were the three donations from the veterans. So that's my update for you. Any questions, I'm happy to take them at this time. I try to do it as fast as I can.
So Bill, just because we're talking about veterans, and we're talking about approving events, so can we get some clarity? I know there was some confusion before town meeting. I just showed Talia quickly, just to ask her, you know, I was picking up Jimmy, Bill Yucna said, did you go to the veterans event? And I said, no, I had to work. And so there was some question about, because it was inside the schools, whether the people had to be masked, not masked. And then it brought up the question like, oh, no, for town meeting, you know, and then, then I actually called Bob Cutler, and he said, no, because the right for someone to be able to come and vote. But just where, it's getting cold now, most of, you know, we're not going to be seeing the outside events. I'm sure no harm was done by anyone, but from what I've been told, people weren't masked, or not everybody was masked inside the school. So can we just get the clear?
We actually had a meeting last week with me, Bill Yucna, and Bill, because I brought up a lot of, because, like, me and Seth are sitting with kids in the school and on the Board of Selectmen, so I understand how they're doing things in town hall, but I understand the DESI requirements. So I feel like there was a little bit of confusion. I feel like we figured it out and got to the bottom of it. And honestly, with town meeting, if we're still in COVID, and DESI still has this requirement, maybe we need to look at somewhere else for town meeting, like other, you know, communities have done. So I think we have, for me, this is the biggest thing now, coming out of this debrief we're having next week, you know, of maybe getting ahead of, you know, we can't just say, okay, this is what town hall's doing, and march forward on veterans events and town meeting. We have to think about what the schools' requirements are. And I talked to Bill Yucna probably at least five times over the last couple of weeks, and then we had that in-person meeting last week, because I kind of felt the same way, that I was like, all right, we really need to debrief, sit in the same room. Because honestly, I said to Bill, I feel like a lot of those conversations weren't happening. Like, I was saying, like, wait, did anyone do this? Or wait, you know, and I don't think it had happened, so it was definitely a little bit of...
There is still some confusion, because I did speak, I did follow up with Matt and Matt Brennan, because I said, you know, what's your thoughts on this? He goes, well, he says, if it is a town event, you don't have to wear a mask. But he says, I understand that the issue about DESI, but I think that there is a question of whether or not, if the school department wants people to wear masks, then that's fine, we'll do that.
Yeah, and I talked to Matt myself, so I talked to Matt myself, I talked to everyone myself. And what Matt said to me was, it's really up to the school, it's their building. It doesn't matter, you know, I mean, it matters what he thinks, and it matters what we're doing in town hall, but it's really the school's building, and it's up to them. So I think...
And like you said, it's hard for them when they're requiring any other event there.
Yeah.
That's understandable.
Even though it's...
Like basketball, Seth and I were at basketball tryouts, and even though it wasn't a school event, you know, you still have to be masked, so.
I think, I think Bob Cutler was really just, for him, he was talking more of some type, it was going to be a vote. You cannot take away the votes, I mean, the rights of a voter. So for him, it wasn't so much town event, whatever. But, yeah, I mean...
And I think my response to that was, well, then, I said to Bill, and Bill, well, then if that's where we are, and we need to respect the school side, we need to think about where a town meeting is, maybe the school's not the right place.
Well, and you told me, you reached out to, there were a couple of towns you saw that were requiring, at their town meeting.
Yep, Easton required it in a school building, and I told you, one other one, Bourne. And then some other towns moved them outside of school buildings.
Different locations to be on school campuses.
So there was a lot of different opinions going around, and that's when we said, let's just all sit down, and let's make sure we're clear for the next thing. But, you know, thinking, I don't, you know, talking to Bill Yucna, like, there's some, like, holiday concerts going up, but there's nothing really town-related, so let's just be really aware of that if anything does come in.
Yeah, we probably won't see anything that I know of. I can't think of anything right now until probably next May. So hopefully, we'll be in a better place anyways.
And hopefully the weather, like, let's say, we ever had to do something, you know, outside, I saw some people, some towns doing things on fields, you know, maybe it's on , maybe it's in an outdoor location, I don't know, we'll have to wait.
They did like a drive-in theater thing.
For the schools, it's just indoors.
Right, it's just, yeah, exactly, it's in the building. So, yeah, that's my biggest thing. So exactly what you're thinking is my one kind of takeaway for our debrief next week as well.
I'm sorry, I stole your thunder.
No, 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 you're right in line with us.
I didn't realize that you were going to talk about that. I would have just left it till next week.
Okay.
All right, so we have a meeting on the 7th and a meeting on the 21st for December, and...
Hope everybody has a good Thanksgiving.
Yeah, motion to a adjourn.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
All of you, favor.
Easy enough.
All right, have a great Thanksgiving, everyone.